Welcome to the City Council's, our Christmas meeting. It's our last meeting of 2017. We like to start our meetings off with the National Anthem. So I'm assuming, are you Maya?
Yes.
Okay, let me read a little about, a little bit about you Maya. So we like to start our meetings off with the singing of Oh Canada. Maya Pavon. She's 11 years old. She is in her fifth year of vocal lessons and has enjoyed performing at the Kiwanis Competitions. She'll be taking her Grade Three, the Royal Conservatory, and she loves hip-hop and acro dancing, playing travel soccer, and vacations in Florida, especially when it's snowy like today. She's honored to be singing our National Anthem for all of us here this evening. So Maya, whenever you're ready, you can get started.
(singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. Carton bras, a porter le paix, il sait porter la croix. Ton histoire est un épopée, des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[135.66][135.66](applause)
So Maya, I was gonna ask you a question. I just wanna know, come back for a second.[148.63][148.63](laughter) She disappeared. Do you get nervous? Were you nervous at all before you did that?
A little bit.
A little bit. Are you relieved now that it's done?
Uh, yes.
Yes. I just wanna say, and I know I speak for everybody, you did just a fantastic job. You've got a beautiful voice, and we really appreciate you doing such a nice job with the National Anthem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good job. Thanks, gentlemen.[172.76][172.76](applause) Please be seated. Now, the first item I'd like to do is call up Mr. David Smith. Is David, or, you hear David? Where is David?
Yes, sir.
There he is. David is one of our commissioners here at the city. Typically, you'll see him in his commissioner's uniform. Today, he's, uh, here as a citizen. Now, David has done this before. He writes poetry. And as a matter of fact, not long ago, he was in the hospital for a little while, and he wrote a bunch of poems, which he shared with me, and he shared with the doctors. Tonight, he's here to share one of his poems. And maybe you wanna introduce it, David? And welcome. Nice tie, by the way.
Thank you. The poem that I have written is Niagara Falls Christmas Message. The festival of lights on Niagara that shine, the heartbeat of the city with you in mind. The spectacular colors on the falls that splash, the thunderous roar as cymbals clash. Joy to the world, our gift has come. Strength in others for a nation to hum, a goal to reach beyond ourselves. Love for others, the harmony of the bells. A man as humble as his life at birth demonstrated love as he walked on this earth. Reflect his light and example we can be. People less fortunate, their potential to see beyond our problems and what we can share, our talent, our love, our enthusiasm with flair. What a joy, this festival of lights, a humble walk to be guided through the night.
I wish you had a little more passion when you read, Dave.[302.12][302.12](laughter)
I try.
So I just wanna explain to everybody, so as one of the commissioners that is here, oftentimes, he'll be here at nighttime, so I'll be in my office, and he'll come in, and he'll recite just the way you heard, but with a little bit more passion. So that's what he's like. He's just a great guy, and that's the kind of people that we have here working with us at the city. They've got a lot of passion. I'm so glad that you share it with us. So Dave, well done, and thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.[329.27][329.27](applause) First order of business is the adoption of the minutes from the November 28th meeting. Can we get a motion? Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Crater. Did you wanna speak to it, Counselor?
Ah, yes, please. Thank you, your worship. I wanna speak to the motion regarding Report CAO 2017-07, the transient accommodation tax. In the motion, and I know I spoke on it, and I know Counselor Rocco, and I think even Counselor Peter Angelo spoke on it. When I spoke on it, the intent of my motion was that I felt that before we did anything at all with this transient tax, that we owed it to the stakeholders, to have some discussions with them, because there are some that do charge the DMF and some that don't. So let's have a conversation before we make any kind of decision. That was the intent. And then, when I looked at the motion itself that was written up, what it's, what it's saying is that we were passing a motion in principle to support the report, which gives the impression to the people in the public that we've passed it, and now we're gonna have some discussion. And in fact, when I looked at Niagara this week, and I was looking at the article by Richard Hutton, he actually wrote it, the way that I and some of the other counselors, I believe, expressed it, when he said, "City ponders the hotel tax to replace the DMF. The implementation of the 4% charge will be deferred until stakeholders are consulted." So he wrote it up the way that he understood it when we had the conversation. So what I'd like to do, rather than, what I'd like to do is to, and I'll have some guidance from the acting clerk, but I'd like to have the motion changed to reflect what was, at least in my opinion, but maybe the other counselors who were here and spoke on it. My opinion was that we defer anything until we actually have a full consultation with everyone that's involved that might be affected by this. So that's what I'm proposing, your worship.
Hey, before we, you didn't give us any heads up that you're gonna talk about this. We do have some people in conflict, Counselor?
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, no, as a result of the comments, a conflict, and I think Counselor Carrillo.
Okay, yeah, so we do have Counselors Carrillo and Thompson's as on, as conflicts. So absolutely agreed that we, although we agreed to it in principle, nothing was gonna move forward until council made a mo, once we met with the stakeholders, then we got together, nothing was gonna be moving forward. So you're asking for a motion of reconsideration or clarification? I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, I have two options. One is I could say clarification, and if the council members agree with that, then the clarification is that there is no motion to approve in principle at all, and that the motion is simply, we're deferring any kind of decision until we have complete consultation with all the stakeholders involved. And if the council agrees to that, then we amend the motion that way. If decided not to, then I will make a motion to reconsider. So I'll try the first approach first.
Okay.
Clerk, is that appropriate? I'll s true you, your worship.
Well, through the mayor, I just wanted to point out that the motion, as worded in the minutes, although it does say approved in principle, it does go on to further say that it's to gather input prior to implementing the transient accommodation tax. So nothing would be implemented until that input is gathered. I'm not sure if that satisfies your concerns or not.
Uh, no. No, it doesn't. I prefer, so it's perfectly clear for the stakeholders who are out there in the community that have been calling, a number of us that happen to see the minutes that are asked for. I prefer to be perfectly clear that nothing is going to happen until we have complete consultation.
Okay, then why don't you make a motion for reconsideration, and then we can restate the motion, and we can do it the way you're suggesting.
So I make the motion that we reconsider the previous motion that's in the minutes.
Okay, moved by Counselor Crater, and seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo.
Well, I was the original.
Well, it's just a motion for reconsideration, so we're gonna start fresh. So we've got a motion for reconsideration. Is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, with two conflicts, okay? So go ahead, Counselor, if you wanna make that motion.
So I move that the implementation of the 4% charge, the transient tax, be deferred, and that no action be taken until we have full and complete consultation with all the stakeholders. And that all the stakeholders involved, anyone that would be affected by this, 'cause some people thought it only applied to those who might be charging a DMF, but there's a whole corps out there who don't charge anything, but they have, they do rent out hotel rooms. So I don't wanna cloud it, but that's simply a defer, no action taken until we have complete consultation. And I think it's important, and I know it's difficult to do, but I also think it's important that, that all the members of council have an opportunity to try to participate. I know it's difficult, 'cause sometimes it's during, during work hours and so on, but we try to make our effort that we all have a chance to have a consultation. And I do, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but I also think it's extremely important that, I know Counselor Carrillo and Counselor Thompson have a conflict, but they certainly have a wealth of knowledge on this subject. I don't know if they're, if they're able to participate. It'd be a shame if they couldn't, just because of their expertise. Anyway, it's a long-winded motion, but that's the motion.
So maybe, Mr. Clerk, could you, you wanna summarize that for me, please? Or, are you able to, or?
Well, based on what I'm hearing, basically, it's a motion to defer. The recommendation is carried within the report, and that no further action be taken until the complete consultation has taken place.
I'll second.
Okay. So same as we had before, the original mover and seconder? Any, yes, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And just to add to the motion as well, I think it would be interesting to understand more of what the city's goals are. I know in the report that came forward, it talked about the DMF and the fact that even if this hotel tax were to be implemented, we can't guarantee that the DMF is gonna be gone. And I know it's not called the DMF anymore, it's called the TIP, but we continue to refer to it as the DMF. So I, I think it would be interesting to understand what the city's goals are in all of this. I don't know that we should be taking the opportunity to implement a 4% tax just because we have that opportunity. So I think the city really needs to clearly state what its goals are, and then maybe that'll help us make a decision.
I thought in the report, it stated our goals. I thought, in it, it said, "So that we're not paying for tourism initiatives." I thought that was, I thought the report was well-written. I mean, if you wanna add that to the motion, but I thought everything was included in that report.
Well, and at the last meeting, I mean, I think I pretty clearly articulated what is in our operating budget right now, which is, I believe, $400,000 for night bus tourism, $316,000 for the Winter Festival of Lights, $40,000 for the Illumination Board, which comes to $800,000. A 4% tax, even at the numbers that you were using, was going to generate the city $7.5 million. And then $7.5 million would go to a DMO. So $800,000 versus $7.5 million. Again, I don't really know that those two are, unless we have a lot of other initiatives that I'm not aware of, so.
Well, I appreciate those numbers, although they're not really accurate. We topped up, we topped up the Winter Festival Lights, we topped up the marketing campaign for Niagara Falls Tourism. There's New Year's Eve show that we put money into. There's a lot of money in that report. That $800,000's not an accurate reflection of what we're currently paying. So I think the idea was that, to include all the things that we're currently paying, including the top-ups, as well as taking some things off of the, the pay list that some of the tourist operators are paying for currently. I know, I thought that the report, I mean, although the discussions are taking place, we're having informal discussions, and we're gonna have formal discussions, I thought that the report did a, a pretty good of a strategic initiative in terms of tourism. I don't know, I thought that report, I thought it was, it had some of those things that you're talking about in there, Counselor.
So you mean to tell me that we would be looking at using that money to market the city? I mean, is not half the money going to a DMO? But yet, we would be looking at taking the money to do a New Year's Eve show and, and other initiatives?
Well, it was in the report. Everything was in the report.
But that's what we want the money for? I don't know that it was in the report. I mean, there was no numbers in the report. If there was, I would've caught them.
I don't know if any staff maybe wanna help out with this? Mr. CAO?
Well, Mr. Mayor, with the report identified, you're right, Counselor, splitting 50/50 with your tourism organization. What the report talked about is the city utilizing its portion for things like funding gaps in funding for Wego and capital replacement of Wego buses, which serve the tourist area, looking at funding initiatives like the New Year's Eve show, the Kelly and Ryan show, our contributions to the Illumination Board, other projects like that that directly relate to the tourist area. And those, those were in the report, and that's where we proposed. The report signaled that we would be spending money, only, the staff recommendation, we'd be only spending that money in the tourist corps, and it would not be spent on other areas outside of the tourist corps. In other words, the area that was generated in was where it would be spent. So that's what the report articulated.
I have comments, but I'll wait for the report. Okay. Do we have any further comment? Counselor Crater?
Yeah, the, I didn't, didn't quite realize we'd get into this kind of discussion. My whole purpose was just to make sure that we had consultation, but I do, and I hear what the council's saying, we have to remember that there's a corps of people out there who are in the industry, that have businesses, who don't charge a DMF. And once we just say to them, "We have good news to tell you, you are now gonna have to charge an additional 4% to your customers," for some of them, it could mean a make or break. That's why.
Hey, Counselor, I'm gonna have to stop you there. I didn't realize it was a motion for deferral, which we shouldn't be talking about.
Let me finish, then tell me what I'm doing wrong.
A motion for deferral is not debatable.
Yeah, that's right. So we, it's already a motion for deferral.
Oh, you're smooth.
No, not smooth. We've already been all talking about it. I was, it was brought to my attention, it's a motion for deferral.
It is, you're right. You're right, Mr. Rich, you are so right.
Oh, Mr. Rich.
I'm just kidding.
For those of you that don't, no, motions for deferral are not debatable. We're not supposed to be talking to the motion. So we'll call, we're gonna call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And that's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor. Any other motion, issues with the minutes? So we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, thank you for that. Any disclosures of a pecuniary interest? There none, or you have to check? Yes, Counselor?
Um, it's on Report CD 21, 2001-17-06. I'm involved with an organization.
Okay.
At least for another month. I'm declared conflict.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you for that. Any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna get on to our presentations part of the agenda. So let me just grab some of my notes here. Like that. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, first, I'd like to call Alex Louis. Alex Louis, can you come around here, Alex? Through the gate, maybe there?
(inaudible).
Come on up here, buddy. I got a little bit to read about Alex. Now, here's a background on Alex. Alex's mom and dad are here today. Alex's mom works for the city in our finance department, and Alex is a youth hockey player for the Niagara Falls Flyers. At the young age of 12, he was diagnosed with osteosarcoma, a cancer that lives inside the bones. After many tests and doctor appointments, Alex and the family were given three options: full amputation, limb salvage surgery, or rotation plasty. Alex chose rotation plasty because his ankle would be repurposed and function as a knee. It would give him much more agility and movement than the other options. The community at large, friends, family, neighbors, hockey teams, and so many others, opened their hearts, and Alex felt great about his support system. Matter of fact, here at the city, I know we had a big bake sale, and Betty's provided a bunch of the baked goods, and we sold them, and it was a real coming together of the community, coming together to support each other. Alex is now cancer-free and equipped with a prosthetic that enables him to return to the ice to enjoy his favorite sport. As a matter of fact, Alex and I, Alex and I were playing sled hockey last year in St. Catherine's at the Meridian Center. I did pretty good at it.[1247.32][1247.32](laughter) Just go with me here. Part of his return to ice has included a special segment on CBC's hometown hockey program and a visit to the Air Canada Centre. As a guest of the NHL, and the best opportunity of all was meeting his hockey hero, Alex Ovechkin. Alex, we, your city council, wanna let you know how proud we are of the way you've carried yourself throughout this difficult time, and what a fine young man that you are. And his optimism is just amazing. And tonight, we're recognizing your strength, your courage, your determination. He's such a, for such a young man, he showed such leadership and such courage in all the challenges that he's had, that we wanted a chance to, to give you a little gift, recognize you in front of all of council, in front of all the residents of Niagara Falls, to say, "We're really proud of you, and we think you're, you've got..." Offered us so many lessons in life that we can learn from you, and we wanna say thanks so much, and letting you know that we're behind you the whole way. Okay, all right, Paul.[1311.32][1311.32](applause) Before you go, hold on, Alex. I just wanna know about your story, 'cause we know Ovechkin's your favorite hockey player, and he promised you that he'd score one goal for you that day, and what did he do?
Scored a hat-trick.
Scored a hat-trick. And I guess what team?
Uh, against the Leafs.[1334.63][1334.63](laughter)
You're a little hero. You are. That guy in your shirt, you're a hero. You are. Just like him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Strange, and Alex, thank you very much. I asked Alex if he had anything to say, if he wanna say a little speech, and he just quietly said, "No."[1358.82][1358.82](laughter) The next up for recognition is some artists. We've got, one, two, three, we've got six artists. I'm asking, would the six artists please come up here and join me inside the horseshoe? So I've got Kiana, Ethan, Luca, Eliza, Julia, and Ann. So come on up here. It's kinda like Santa Claus reading out the reindeer, except they're not the same names. Come, Kiana, Ethan, and Luca, Eliza.[1393.44][1393.44](laughing) Okay, now, you got names here. Where's Ann? Ann?
Oh, me.
Oh, Ann, okay. Hang on that, hold on a second. And then I'm gonna read a little bit. Kiana, okay. "Christmas came early for you guys." Eliza, okay. You're welcome. We've got Luca. Is that you? All right. And Julia, okay, for you. And we didn't forget about you either. Ethan, that's for you. So come on around here, you guys. Come over on this side, and then look this way. So come over here, come over here. Okay, so I wanted to see ya. There's the camera, that's videotaping you guys. So these are the students. Every year, the city of Niagara Falls does a Christmas card that we send with holiday greetings to everyone in the community, and some of these go around the world, they go to other countries. And on the front is a picture of City Hall on a nice snowy night, with the lights on and a nice dusting of snow. And we made a little change this year. There'll be another change next year again, because City Hall looks different, if anyone's noticed. We're redoing the outside of the building, but on the inside, we selected some, we asked all the schools, all the elementary schools in Niagara Falls, if they would submit pictures for our annual card. And we received a lot of them from a number of schools, and these students here, their pictures were selected by a committee to go inside of all of the cards. And these ones, as I say, go not just around the city, but some areas around the world. And we wanted to acknowledge them, so for, this was Canada's 150. We decided to make this extra edition, Christmas edition for our cards. Reached out to all the school boards. We had approximately 100 submissions. These were the six finalists, and some of the pictures depicted the natural area around us in the falls. There are winter scenes of people having fun in the snow, the things that Canadians do, what Christmas and the holidays mean to them, and some even put an ode to the Canada 150. They put up on our screens the actual pictures that the kids did, and the students themselves are Kiana Robertson, maybe just give a wave when I say your name, from Prince Philip. If your moms and dads, you got cameras, you can come close if you can't see. And if you want, you come right up here, and if you, it's up to you guys, I'll give you a second to think about it. Secondly, we've got Ethan Orr from Prince Philip. All right, whoa, we got the crowd, we got fans out there. Luca Megaro, Megaro, from Loretto Catholic. There, blocking you there a little bit. Good job, Luca. Eliza, am I saying that right? Eliza Kirilova, from Prince Philip. And we've got Julia Simone from Ecole Notre Dame de la Jeunesse. Did I say that right? Yes. And Ann Sammy, or Sonny? Sonny, from Forest View. So we presented them with little gifts, little keepsakes from the, the city of Niagara Falls. It's our small way of saying, "Thank you for participating in the community, thank you for helping us to make our cards look that much prettier, and thanks for making the extra effort." I mean, you didn't have to do it, but you did do it, we're really proud, and your pictures were selected, so congratulations and thank you from all the city.[1601.44][1601.44](applause) Thank you. Dr. Stafford Daven. Don't be shy. I'm gonna ask Wayne Thompson, former mayor, to join me up here as we congratulate. Where are you, Dr. Daven? I'm gonna read a little bio about why he's up here. Come on, gentlemen, turn around. Oh, look at these guys, eh?
I checked yours a little bit.[1677.32][1677.32](laughter)
Dr. Daven. Dr. Stafford Daven established Heart Niagara in 1976, a year before the Great Blizzard. His original idea was to focus on cardiac rehabilitation and to prevent heart disease. Dr. Daven approached Wayne Thompson to be the chairman of the board of this new charity 40 years ago. At the time, it was a much-needed community initiative to help address the most common and the most costly health problems in the system. Over the years, it's had an enormous effect on our community. It's provided cardiac care programs through Healthy Heart School Programs. Dr. Daven knew that the disease begins in childhood, and they began Heart Health Day, a day when students have their heart, their weight, their waist, and their blood pressure measured at school. These results are not only shared with the families and their doctors, but they're also used to help educate students about heart disease and the importance of living a healthy lifestyle. They've contributed to dozens of research studies using the school's program data. In 2000, they expanded again to establish the Public Access Defibrillation Program for the region, partnering with Niagara EMS. With an annual budget now reaching $1 million, Heart Niagara now focuses on all of these programs and much more. The organization's cardiac rehabilitation program is so successful that the Ontario Cardiac Care Network asked the agency to evaluate other such programs across the province, and it all started right here in Niagara Falls. Its training program reaches 10,000 people per year. Congratulations to former mayor and current counselor Wayne Thompson for his role in the establishment, the great success and the growth of Heart Niagara over the years. And finally, of course, a great deal of thanks to Dr. And finally, of course, a great deal of thanks to Dr. Stafford Dobbin. Thank you for your great idea that's grown to be a trusted, reliable, hugely beneficial organization that's helped thousands, not just here, but all around. It's a source of education and wellness in our community. For over 40 years, we've got Dr. Dobbin to be grateful for, what a legacy to leave. And on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, Dr. Dobbin, I present to you a certificate, and that's for you, and a beautiful picture of Niagara Falls. On behalf of the city council here of Niagara Falls, we'd like to present this to you that you can put on your wall, and it'll be a reminder for years to come of the legacy that you have left here in Niagara Falls. How about we acknowledge Dr. Dobbin? We can do a picture, let's show the picture here. Wayne, you want to hold the one?
Hold it.
Dr. Dobbin, would you like to maybe share a few words?
I thought Alex had a great idea, he said he didn't want to make it. Mayor, councillors, Wayne, I think, thank you very much for recognizing this very unique little organization that is limited to the Niagara Peninsula, but also, I would like to thank all the hundreds of EMS, nurses, doctors, and clerical staff who volunteered over the years on all the projects that Heart Niagara has contributed to this region. Amazing legacy. Karen Stern and our staff and board over the years for struggling to keep this very difficult program alive. I will bore you with one fact, this is the only place in the world that actually goes into schools and tries to identify the students and their families who are at risk for future heart and stroke, diabetes, obesity, et cetera, because if you can cure this bloody thing, you have to do it when it starts, and it starts in Charlotte. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say I'm delighted to be here tonight to congratulate Dr. Dobbin. He keeps throwing me into this circle. I was asked by Dr. Dobbin 40 years ago, can you imagine, I was only 10. Anyway, I had a small role, but the decision by Dr. Dobbin 40 years ago to come up with the innovative idea to do this in our area is just spectacular. You have no idea the number of lies that he has affected by what he has done with his program. Karen Stern and all the staff, they do such a great job, and I'm delighted to be here just to congratulate him and say thank you.
Next up, I'd like to now call Chris Dobrowski up here to be acknowledged as well. If you'd come around here, Chris. Welcome, Chris. Guys, I'd like to acknowledge, now, Chris Dobrowski is a local talent here in the community. He does a lot of different marketing initiatives, including, but not limited to, the Comic-Con that takes place every year at the Scotiabank Convention Centre, which has been a huge success. It brings in thousands of people from all over, and it's really put us on the map. And it's so neat, because of Chris, I've got to meet a lot of my childhood heroes. I mean, everyone from Lou Ferrigno, remember the incredible Hulk, to a couple of soap stars, to, you know, Bat, what's that? Guy Lefleur, just recently, I got to interview Guy Lefleur. It's been amazing, he brings these people back that we remember as kids, whether it was, you name it, any of those shows you watched back in the 80s, he's brought them all back, whether it's Dukes of Hazzard, or you pick your show, he's been bringing them back, and he's done so much. So, he was a natural guy to go to when I said, "It was Canada 150, and we needed to stand out. We're going to do some unique events," and we asked if he would, Chris, would you please chair or commit? So without any hesitation, he said I would, and he did. And, you know, this is a volunteer position, he had to oversee a volunteer committee and have a year of activities, and it was a great year. It's not quite done, matter of fact, the last couple pieces, the legacy sign, which is a welcome sign into Canada on Veterans, Niagara Veterans Memorial Highway, is being erected as we speak, that'll welcome the millions of people that come over the Rainbow Bridge into Niagara Falls as well, as, we're going to have a Canada 150 New Year's Eve, nationally broadcast celebration with Rick Mercer, that'll be broadcast on CBC, but he's been here to volunteer throughout the year, along with the committee. There's some of the committee people here in the room as well. It was a real team effort, but it takes leadership to get the ideas forward and then to get them implemented, and it was a great job, we're so proud of the work that he did. So on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, Chris, it's just a small token of our appreciation for your commitment, homegrown talent right here in Niagara Falls, and it's so great when you give of your talents for your community, and he did in such an amazing way for our Canada 150 celebrations to really make them special. So Chris, on behalf of city council and all the residents, we're all grateful for what you did, this is a small way to say thank you very much, and hope you'll do it again.
Thank you.
We do actually, we have a presentation that we will give, it's very short, and then we have a wrap-up video as well, but if you don't mind, we'll scoot back around.
Thanks so much, appreciate that, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Thank you for the kind words. As the mayor mentioned, we were busy all year long celebrating Canada's 150th birthday. It was an exciting year. Seems like yesterday, Tina and I were in front of council presenting some initiatives that we wanted to execute in honor of Canada's 150th birthday. We had a committee, as Mayor Deodato mentioned, of a volunteer group of all of the BIAs throughout Niagara Falls, the Niagara Peninsula Energy, Inc., as well as the Niagara Parks Commission. Tina, of course, as well, is a committee member, we're not done until December 31st, but we'd like to just go through a short presentation on what it is that the committee was busy doing this year. One of the first goals that we thought would be to organize host, co-host, partner, and brand 150 events in Niagara Falls, and we were actually successful in doing that, and I think we were successful to the point of over 220 events, and Tina, actually, if you don't mind, maybe going over a few of those events that we were...
Sure, we had the Millennium Trail Canada 150 pathway opening, garage sales at the Gale Centre, an evening with Guy...
Guy Lefleur.
The Winter Festival of Lights programmed a few of their items to be Canada 150, so having some of the lights on the power plant building. The 150 Fun Fest in the Falls, which took place over at the Scotiabank Convention Centre, and these are just a few of the events that took place. There were several that took place on the Niagara Parkway and throughout the, at the Niagara Public Library, so there was tons of things, we really came together as a community.
And just to that point, to put it in perspective, 220 events, even if an average of 200 or 300 people attended those events, I mean, thousands upon thousands of people, including Canada Day, of course, which was a huge success, but the Fun Fest in the Falls as well, so it was literally the whole community came together to celebrate Canada 150.
Civic pride, there were street banners placed all over the city, working with the various BIAs to include them, from Lundys Lane, Queen Street, Victoria Avenue, and Fallsview BIA, just to name a few. Canada 150 teardrop banners were present at every event that we had throughout the community, and Canada 150 inspired decor. Our website, which I'm going to let Chris go into, 150inthefalls.com.
So the goal was to create a standalone website that we thought we could drive people to, working together with the city's website as well, just to flow traffic through, but the website received over half a million impressions. Seventy percent of those impressions were from locals here in Niagara Falls, which is great, but we did have some hits from outside of the area, so we did bring in some folks from outside of the community within the Niagara region as well. Our social media impressions as well were well over 500,000, so we were all over social media and we were all over the internet throughout 2017.
In addition, the community parks that were open over the course of the year, most recently in Chippewa.
The Captain Canoe Comic Book, huge success, it was the first time ever that Chapter Host Publishing partnered with the municipality in publishing an exclusive comic book. The book featured Canadian superheroes written by, an artist by Canadian writers, and artists are drawn by Surrey. It was distributed to thousands of children through schools across Niagara Falls District and Catholic School Board as well, and we handed the comic book out at various events like Comic-Con, as the mayor mentioned, Canada Day as well.
Who's that character in the right, was he one of the superheroes? Did anybody notice the other superhero? My superpower is I can make chocolate disappear.
And then the welcome sign is, once again, the mayor had mentioned, currently being constructed. We are planning a celebration to unveil the sign, stay tuned for details, we'll be inviting the community to come out and celebrate. I believe we have an artist rendering of the sign, once it's completed, if we can pull that up.
Yes. I don't know how to put this small, I'll come to that at the end of the presentation.
Hold the video, you want to do the video next on the sign?
Yeah. We also had 3D projection mapping on the Oaks Hotel, which had featured Canada 150, as well as the Winter Festival of Lights had a Canada 150 display.
Yeah, so again, I mean, as part of the committee, thank you to all the committee members, all the volunteers, it was truly a group effort. We met regularly, it was fun, we had a blast doing it, and what we've done is prepared, I think it's a 90-second video that we'd like to show council to kind of sum it all up and give you an idea of what the year looked like.
That was great, well done.
One of the other items that I missed was the Canada 150 art sculpture that's at the brink of the falls, was one of 19 sites that was chosen in Canada, so that is there and still will be up for the remainder of the year. So there's a lot of exciting things that took place. Red and white flower beds throughout the city at 26 different city-managed flower beds.
And there's the sign rendering that we spoke about on display on the PowerPoint. And I think that pretty much covers it. Again, thanks to all the volunteers, thanks to council for supporting this initiative, it was fun for us, and if we have the chance, we'll do it again in 50 years.
And I think we might have some questions or comments, Council Strange?
Yeah, Your Worship, I just want to congratulate both of you for doing this amazing job. I know at the beginning of the year, you know, you took on this task, you both have young families too, so it's not easy to do this, and you formed a committee, I know some of the committee members are here, Paisley, I see over there, and a few others, but you guys did just a wonderful job, and I think every community in Canada is doing a 150, so, you know, you're trying to do something unique that attracts people and to come up, I remember you go, "Oh yeah, we're going to come up with 150 events," and we're like, "Yeah, good luck," and you end up coming up with 220, so just amazing, amazing job, and hats out to everyone in the committee. And do you have any more comic books left over? I heard you got a pile of them somewhere.
I think the mayor might have a stack. Congratulations. It's in your Christmas package this year, so act surprised. Any other questions or comments of council, so maybe we can get a motion to receive their presentation tonight? Moved by councillor Morocco, second by councillor Thompson. If there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. And on behalf of the city, I want to thank all the members that were involved, I want to thank Tina and Chris and your leadership as well. I think it was, I think councillor Strange nailed it. I mean, 150 events for 150 years was a big enough of a goal, and you went and you over, you surpassed your goal, and you did it in such a great way. That video was awesome, it made you wish that you hadn't missed any of those events, and there were some great events throughout the year, and I'm sure you're glad it's over. So, thank you very much, well done, thank you. Next up, I'd like to call up Janice Thompson, the Chair of the Niagara Parks Commission, to do a presentation on the NPC's new strategic plan.
Thank you, mayor.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, good evening, mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very pleased to be here on behalf of the Niagara Parks Commission to give you an update on our new strategic plan. It's always a pleasure to be here, and when I come, I always think, "Oh, I should be here more often, it's so interesting, so nice to see all the interaction with your community." So the Niagara Parks Commission, as all of you well know, was established back in 1885, and we were given heritage preservation as part of our mandate in 1896. We are an agency of the provincial government and operate under the authority of the Niagara Parks Act. The commission was founded on two general principles. The first was that the park should not be a financial burden on the province and should always be financially self-sustaining, and the second one is that the park should, as far as possible, be free to the public. The mandate of the Parks Commission is to protect and promote the natural and cultural heritage along the Niagara River Corridor. And this is a very interesting slide here, this is new information that we're very happy to bring forward and share with you. We hired a company called Urban Metrics, and they helped us focus on what are the impacts of the Niagara Parks Commission. So we know that we'll raise awareness of the important role that we play through the creation of jobs and economic well-being for the area. To accomplish the task, we engaged Urban Metrics, and they've evaluated our economic contributions to the region of Niagara, Ontario, and Canada. And this recently completed study identifies the following significant range of benefits that we realize from the visitors and the NPC operations. In the year, our year 2016/2017, we saw 8.2 million tourists visiting attractions, golf courses, retail facilities, restaurants, and transportation services operated by the Niagara Parks. Of these total visits, there were 3.8 million unique visitors that spent an average of $318 per person, generating some $1.2 billion in tourism-related spending, right here in the Niagara Parks. This is the first time we've ever had concrete figures that we can actually point to, what are the contributions generated, so we're very happy with this, and we're also happy to share the fact that visitor spending supported over 15,900 jobs. We're also happy to share the fact that visitor spending supported over 15,900 jobs, over $682 million in labor income, and over $458 million in total taxes. NPC's annual capital and operating budgets generated over $123 million to the economy, 1,460 full-time years of employment, over $75 million in labor income, and over $48 million in tax revenue to three levels of government. Values of preservation and conservation inform absolutely everything that the NPC says and does. It is the very basic foundation of the organization. In addition, NPC's mandate and operations achieve other community benefits that increase the quality of life for everyone. We purchase locally-produced goods, maintain parks, recreation spaces, year-round road maintenance, heritage and cultural assets. We improve accessibility. We reduce municipal servicing costs for the local municipalities. We increase international visitor exposure and contribute to a critical mass of visitors coming to the Niagara region. And we also, through the study, have shown that we do increase real estate values on lands close to the Niagara River, which in turn helps to increase local municipal property tax revenues. Niagara Parks is very proud to contribute to the development and the enrichment of our community through preserving and showcasing 1,300 hectares of property along 56 kilometers of the Niagara Parkway. We have community tree planting events. We've planted 110,000 new trees in the parks since 2013. We've had all of our restaurants certified through the province as Feast On Restaurants, which means that they showcase tastes of Ontario with Ontario produce and products, VQA wines, and craft beers. We held some wonderful celebratory pop-up dinners this past year. We had locations at Mayfair Arch, Oaks Garden Theater, and the Niagara Glen. We continued with the Coca-Cola Concert Series and the Ontario Live Concert Series in Queen Victoria Park. We had the fireworks displays with, through our partnerships, in Queen Victoria Park every Monday to Friday this past summer. We hosted many events, including high-profile events such as the Kelly and Ryan Show. We had cultural and community events on the NPC properties. We had the Imala Festival, Rumble at the Falls concert event, Rogers Hometown Hockey, and we contribute to the annual Winter Festival of Lights, including an annual financial support in the amount of $300,000. We contribute also $100,000 annually to the New Year's Eve celebration, and we forward a $1.1 million payment to the city of Niagara Falls for the operation of the We Go Bus Service. We contribute $45,000 every year to the summer fireworks program, and we have a payment in lieu of taxes also to the city, which for 2017 amounted close to $1.2 million. So the Niagara Parks is an organization that's proud to play its part in the area and proud to make its contribution to the community. So this past spring, the commissioners started to begin work on an updated and modernized strategic plan to guide us forward. The new strategic plan looks beyond short-term considerations and presents a set of core principles that reflect our unparalleled offerings and define exactly where we want to go as an organization. This is our goal. Our vision is to be one of the most spectacular parks in the world. We want to be an innovative example of sustainability as the environmental and cultural stewards of the Niagara River corridor. We want to be a welcoming, accessible, and inspiring place that offers world-class, natural, historical, and authentic experiences, and we want to be a source of national pride and identity. Our 10-year strategic plan is based on four themes. The first is to preserve and showcase our rich heritage, culture, and lifestyle. The second is to leverage and activate our natural wonders and iconic experiences. Number three is to support a dynamic business environment with a focus on attracting investment, connection to local communities, job creation, and economic well-being. And the fourth is to take experiences, services, and hospitality to the next level. So this is our first pillar, which is the preserving and showcasing rich heritage, culture, and lifestyle. We'll be implementing our new Niagara Parks brand initiative and wayfinding. We'll be promoting NPC's environmental and cultural stewardship role and implementing a guest services center that will enable all visitors to have one central touch point for rapid response to information requests. In our second pillar, where we're going to leverage and activate our natural wonders and iconic experiences, we'll be redeveloping the Table Rock complex, including a refreshing of the retail stores, the culinary operations, and Journey Behind the Falls. We're working on a master plan development for Queen Victoria Park and a transportation plan as well, including links with Metro Links, having partnerships with them, and a new cycling strategy as well. For the next goal, which is to support the dynamic business environment, we're still examining the options for redevelopment of Niagara Parks Marina at Millers Creek, and we're working on options to stabilize and phasing in adaptive reuse of the historic power station buildings. You can see these are all very big goals, very, very important to the destination and to Niagara Parks. And taking our experience of service and hospitality to the next level, we'll be analyzing and implementing NPC security and emergency plans. We'll continue with the modernization of our internal financial software and investing in staff training and change management. We believe that telling our story is absolutely the first critical step in delivering our new strategic plan as we implement the new brand strategy. The new brand is intended to connect the entire Niagara River experience from Lake Erie to Lake Ontario under one identity, its one park, lots of experiences within that park, so the new brand will focus on that. And the intention is to deepen the relationships with our visitors at every stage of their journey, when they plan the trip, when they're here, and when they take their precious memories home. An oak leaf is what has been chosen as our new brand image, and the brand image of this oak leaf, it symbolizes nature and renewal, the lifeblood of any great park. It represents sustainability, the promise to preserve and enhance the beautiful environment that has been entrusted to us. And you'll see on the materials that we've distributed, it's a multicolored leaf, and that's to signify diversity, a mosaic of experiences, of people, and of opportunity. This is an image here with the new logo, pardon me, the new oak leaf there, and you can see the colors are in fact vibrant, as vibrant as the new lights on the falls. So this is a quick, I'll just go quickly through here, through the year that's just finished. As Mayor Diodati mentioned, there were lots of 20, sorry, 150 celebrations and lots of events that we were all very fortunate to be a part of, and when you look back on them, they were all tremendous. This is one that took place on May the 2nd, and I had the pleasure of announcing the 150 anniversary plans within the parks. It was all centered around the theme of Rooted. As part of that event, we had the chance to hear from Harry Youngerton, who is the Treasurer of the Canadian Garden Council, and he was celebrating with us the unveiling of the Canadian Garden Council's Canada 150 Garden Promenade in Queen Victoria Park. During his speech, when he referred to the work of the Niagara Parks and the beauty of our gardens, Mr. Youngerton stated that Niagara Parks is not the backdrop to the show. You are the show. This is why people come from around the world to experience the beauty that NPC has created. It was so nice to hear those remarks and a true confirmation and recognition of the work that we do to protect and showcase these lands for visitors from all around the world. These are images from the pop-up dinner series, the introduction of the Wild Play Whirlpool Adventure Course, which was very successful and warmly received by children and people who are very active, who have been using it on a regular basis as part of their training programs. The unveiling of the Harriet Tubman plaque at the Whirlpool Bridge, this was an initiative started by some schoolchildren from the city of St. Catharines from two different schools. They came to the parks and asked us to recognize the importance of the work that was done by Harriet Tubman, and we were delighted to get to this point where we put up the plaque. Yoga at Niagara Parks through Namaste Niagara, you can see there outside Journey Behind the Falls and at Queenston Heights. We introduced a series of 12 pollinator gardens, and these go all along the river from Niagara on the lake through to Fort Erie, and they're worth visiting. Each garden has a plaque there that has different, it explains the plants that have been put there, and it also talks about various myths from the indigenous community, myths related to nature. So they're quite educational and interesting. We opened the Niagara Glen Nature Center. We had the Science North exhibit that we installed there, and we saw thousands of people come through in the summertime exchanging wonderful finds that they had found outside, rocks, plants, unidentified objects, and they came in and were able to identify them there. There is in that room a magnificent telescope that you must, must go and see. The telescope is trained on the Niagara River, and it's a phenomenal view to see. It's truly, truly very moving. Oaks Garden Theater, we were happy to finish our restoration work there. We celebrated the 80th anniversary of the park, and we also had a citizenship ceremony there, which was really moving as well. 29 new Canadians from 27 different countries around the world. It was remarkable. So I'm open to answer any questions that anyone may have regarding the work of the Parks Commission.
Thank you very much, Chair. That was a very good presentation.
Pardon me. Could I first of all recognize that, of course, Mayor Diodati and Counselor Carrio are both commissioners, and we're very pleased to have both of them contributing to all of this great body of work. But I'm also joined this evening by Regan McCullough, our CEO, and Natasha Divas. So I'd ask Regan to come up and help me with the questions. Sorry. Sorry, too.
Yeah, no, welcome, Regan.
Thank you.
I see you've got Natasha here as well, so we've got the whole team. First off, Counsel Morocco.
Your worship, I just want to give recognition to Janice Thompson, the board, and everyone that, their entire team at Niagara Parks. I have to say, as you travel all around the world and you see all the different beautiful destinations out there, it's nice to come back home and look at the falls and drive along the Parkway and just think how wonderful it is right here in our own backyard, and we tend to take that for granted because it's just there. And all the visitors that do come, and I think they just continuously come back again and again, so I want to just say thank you very much to all of you at the Niagara Parks that do what you do and to keep it as beautiful as it is and keep up on the mandate that's driven by the province. So we truly appreciate that. I just wanted to say that because I think it's something that we all probably truly believe in, and the jobs that are going forward and continuously creating more beautiful venues throughout the whole park. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Carrio and then Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. I don't have any questions, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank council for choosing me to be able to work with this wonderful group of people. It's a tremendous pleasure to work with such a fine group of people that are very dedicated, similar to our employees, without the political pressure.
Thank you for that. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, I had the pleasure of being involved with Parks Commission for many years and really enjoyed that opportunity. And what a, what a great job they've done since 1885. You know, I used to be interviewed on the US side all the time, and they said, "How did you do such a great job on the, on the Canadian side?" And I said, "Well, it's very easy. Goes back to 1885, when they were wise enough to set the property aside from Fort Erie to Niagara on the lake and maintain it as the Niagara Parks Commission." What a great job. You look on the other side, and what do you see? They let it all be taken over by antiquated industry, and they really don't have anything like we have on this site of the border. So we're very fortunate to have what we have in the Niagara Parks Commission. Congratulations on maintaining what you have. And I saw a little picture of the Toronto Power Station there. I recall probably 20 years ago calling the proposals on that building, and you know, it's without exception one of the most historic and architectural important buildings in this Canada. And I'm just wondering what the long-term plan is to try to bring that back to life that's following apart. The building is really sad to see what has happened there, and we couldn't do it. I think most of the proposals we got years ago, everybody wanted a boutique hotel, and nobody up here wanted a boutique hotel. So I'm wondering if you're thinking about this, what we're going to do in the future, if you have some plans. I think provincial government, federal government, and the Niagara Parks Commission should seriously think about everybody joining together and doing something with that wonderful building there that is deteriorating.
I'll ask Regan to share that.
Thank you, through the mayor. We're, at the present time, looking at basically what we're calling stabilization and adaptive reuse of all three of the power plants that have been decommissioned. And our first goal, and we are working with the province, and we've got several meetings set up in the new year where we really want to spend some time driving out the business case for each of those buildings. And of course, each of them has individual types of challenges, some are more deteriorated and so on, the size of them, those kinds of things. But at the point that the commission decides to go out to market, we want to make sure we've got the solid business case in place that can attract the kind of investment we're looking for. Very large projects will need significant dollars and so on, so hopefully answers your question.
Thank you. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I don't have any questions, but like others, I just wanted to say thank you through you to Janice Thompson and the commission and the staff at the Niagara Parks Commission, not only for coming here tonight and sharing your strategic plan, which I think is a great idea so that people at home can understand what the Parks Commission is doing, but also for being stewards of the park, as was mentioned. I think we're very fortunate, your worship, living where we are and having the amenities that the park offers available to us at virtually no cost at all. I know myself, you know, with my family, I enjoy hiking in the gorge. It was last year we did the show on Getting Chatty with Mayor Diodati, and also even the Whirlpool Steps, and I see a lot of people exercising, doing those all the time, and just enjoying other parts of the park. I also think that I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you, as I usually do, for being a partner in the wonderful past, and I know we're going to talk about it later on in the agenda tonight, but the wonderful past did raise $30,000 this year. So thank you again for being our partner, and we're going to put it into the parks. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, your worship, but just a quick question. Would this presentation be on your website so that someone like myself could hook into it and send it to overseas to people that I know?
I imagine it should, could be. No reason why it shouldn't be on our website.
It really portrays the beauty. I think it's fantastic. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that. We'll take that back.
Thank you for that. Well, if there's no further comments of council, then I'll look for a motion to receive the presentation. Okay, moved by Counsel Strange, seconded by Counsel Carrio. We'll call that vote. All those in favor? Of course, that's unanimous, and thank you for such a great job and a great presentation as well. It's really great when we're partnered together, we're on the same page, and certainly the high tide rises all the boats, and we're all benefiting when we work like this together on everything, from Canada 150 to New Year's Eve to Live with Kelly, to all the things that, and the initiatives that you guys do. It's great that we have partners like the Parks Commission to work with. So on behalf of the city, we want to say thank you and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Great. Thank you. All right, and our last item under presentations is, where did we go? The Niagara Regional Composition of Council. We're joined tonight, not only do we have Regional Counselor Selina Balpatty with us, we've got the mayor of West Lincoln, Doug Joyner, here to join us as well. Mayor Joyner to join us.
Your worship, how are you tonight?
Welcome. We're well. Welcome, we're well. How are you?
Good, I'm good, thank you. Welcome, councillors. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. The Hanukkah. I'm joined tonight with Councillor Terry Bell. I want to say good evening, Mayor Diodati, councillor staff, and to Regional Councillor Volpatti. My name is Douglas Joyner and I am the mayor of West Lincoln and it is absolutely my pleasure to be here in beautiful Niagara Falls on this evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on increasing the composition of regional government. I want to make it very clear that this process that West Lincoln Council is embarking on alongside with our regional, local, area municipality partners is not just about more governance, but rather it's about increasing the level of service for a municipality experiencing tremendous growth starting in the year 2018. West Lincoln Council's request to add a regional councillor is a directive of my council and the constituents we represent. Adding a regional councillor will benefit the residents of West Lincoln as it will provide the required representation at regional council to properly address West Lincoln issues and properly represent our constituents. The township of West Lincoln will be facing tremendous growth during the 2018-2022 term of council, right through to the year 2041, with a projected growth of 29,460 residents and almost 10,000 new jobs. Economic development, planning and development, water and sewer infrastructure, building of roads and bridges, and the creation of a complete sustainable community is top of mind in West Lincoln and requires adequate representation to properly address all of these issues. The Greater Niagara Chamber of Commerce has indicated that a complete review should be undertaken, and I agree with that. However, I do not agree that there should be a delay in providing West Lincoln with the appropriate representation. And actually, the GNCC's letter has stated the same, and I quote for you here tonight. "We understand Mayor Joyner's request to add a regional councillor to help and represent his constituency at council, and we know that to do so would bring West Lincoln's representation in line with what would be expected given the relative size of their population. In short, adding another elected representative from West Lincoln absolutely 100% does equal better governance around the horseshoe, simply because there will be another set of eyes and ears at all committee and council meetings to digest the volume of material. I defy any mayor from Thorold, from Lincoln, Grimsby, Port Colborne, Niagara on the Lake, Pelham, or Fort Erie to stand up and say that the additional regional councillor that they have is not beneficial to the constituents of their prospective communities. Quite simply, the workload in reading is simply just too much for one regional representative at this time. I know I personally see the volumes of reading material that regional councillors have to consume in a three-week period. These regional councillors' input is invaluable. As the GNCC letter states, West Lincoln is right to explore a governance structure that best supports the ambitious goals of this council and the council of West Lincoln." Councillors, at this time, you can help West Lincoln achieve its goals and become more efficient in their deliverance of responsible government by approving this bylaw tonight. Niagara Falls councillors and the GNCC, we give you our word that West Lincoln will show leadership by asking for change in the composition of regional government in the term 2018-2022. But right now, we need your help. And in West Lincoln, we accede the addition of one regional representative as a start in the right direction. Let's work together as a family and we look forward to a favorable vote. Thank you. Any comments or questions, your worship?
Thank you for that. Mayor Joyner? Do we have any questions or comments from Mayor Joyner or the councillor? None? Okay. So they are looking for our support. Yes, Councillor Morocco? Okay, there's a motion by Councillor Morocco to show the support and seconded by Councillor Carrio that we support West Lincoln. Is there any dialogue or discussion to that? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? Opposed? Okay, with one opposed. So that passes. So congratulations, good luck with your journey. I know you've got many more communities to get to before the end of this year, and we wish you well.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, councillors, staff, regional councillor. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. What I'm going to do now, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to jump into the mayor's report because I know there's a lot of people itching. I've been, my Twitter's been on fire, everyone asking when it's going to be. And Councillor Carrio had to go to the washroom and it was perfect time. So first off, we'll start off with obituaries. Robert Carpenter, retired fire captain. And of course, John Roy Buckner, a friend of city council and a regular here at our meetings, both passed away and we passed along our condolences to their families. Council members that helped council through the different events, and I know Mayor Joyner mentions how busy we are. We had the Global Legacy Boxing Match. I was joined by councillors Thompson, Carrio, and Strange at that event. It was a very exciting event. We had a title fight as well. The 27th Annual Good News Breakfast, 101.1 and 105.1. There, they filled several city buses with food and toys. And I was joined there by Councillor Morocco, as well as our CAO Ken Todd, where more than $125,000 in cash, food, and gifts for Project Share was raised. I was joined at the grand opening of the McFadden Chiropractic Clinic by councillors Peter Angelo and Strange. And they also joined me at the grand opening of the new Starbucks at the corner of Drummond and Lundys Lane. And of course, that's a place that we like to call councillor Peter Angelo's office. And of course, the grand opening of Canada BW. I was joined by councillors Thompson and Morocco and a regional councillor Volpatti, which is going to be a place for international business to use Niagara Falls as a brokerage house, so to speak, for foreign trade zones. This is going to be an exciting opportunity for international business right here in Niagara Falls. Just a couple of announcements. Legion 479 will be providing a holiday gift wrapping service. They'll be doing it at the Canada One Factory Outlets on Lundys Lane. They'll be doing it from now right through till the 24th of December, every day from noon until 8:00 PM. Sundays will just be until 5:00 PM. All the proceeds will go to Legion 479. Your festive Christmas support is appreciated for the branches. It was mentioned earlier today by Councillor Peter Angelo about the Wonderful Falls Pass results. Congratulations to Councillor Peter Angelo, Chair of the Sleep Cheap Committee and the architect of the world of the Wonderful Falls Pass results, and city staff Dale Morton, who worked very hard to make this the most successful year yet. The Wonderful Falls Pass raised more than $30,000 this year, bringing us to a total of nearly $70,000 raised since its inception. Lastly, New Year's Eve at Niagara Falls. It's an all-Canadian lineup to celebrate Canada 150, headlined by Juno Award-winning Marianas Trench, performances by multi-platinum selling band Simple Plan, three-time CCMA Female Vocalist of the Year, is being touted as the next Shania Twain, Jessie Muscaluck, and as well as up-and-comers, James Barker Band. Outdoor celebrations begin at 8:00 PM in Queen Victoria Park. Fun food and beverages options will be available along with a stellar entertainment. Fireworks will take place to ring in the new year. It'll be nationally broadcast by CBC. And this New Year's host will be Rick Mercer, who recently highlighted Niagara Falls and the Winter Festival of Lights on his show, The Mercer Report, that played last Tuesday. So on behalf of city council, we'd like to wish and extend a very Merry Christmas and season's greetings and a Happy New Year to everyone, to remind them not to drink and drive, and that the next council meeting will take place Tuesday, January the 9th, where we'll be discussing our 2018 budget. Yes, Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And while representatives of the parks are still in the crowd, so the Wonderful Falls Pass, the date is raised almost $70,000. And the intent of the money when, when the idea first came forward was to use it to make parks in the city more accessible. So this year, the city is planning on redoing or redeveloping 10 parks. So what I've asked city staff to do is I've asked them to give, give council an option of adding some form of accessible structure so that our playgrounds can become more accessible. So I just wanted to announce that while the people from the parks are still here. Thanks, your worship.
Well, that's great. And thank you to our parks for being great partners, to Councillor Peter Angelo for your leadership on this. And the community's going to benefit and it doesn't matter what level that you're at, what level of accessibility, we're going to make sure that everybody's going to be able to have fun and be able to play. So on behalf of the city, we want to say thank you to the parks and thank you to all the hotel operators like Councillor Carrio, who offer their properties so that we can raise money through Sleep Cheap and through our Parks Commission to help us do the Wonderful Falls Pass. Maybe we can give a hand of thanks to their, for their participation. And I'd also like to acknowledge our city staff who do a nice job at making the council chambers look so festive and get us all in the holiday spirit. And they do a really nice job. We appreciate them doing that as well. Now on to the exciting part of tonight, our capital budget. I can't think of anyone more ready to present right now than our Director of Finance, Todd Harrison. So Mr. Harrison, whenever you're ready, we are ready to be entertained.
Thank you for that introduction. This is the first of our budgets that we're bringing forward tonight, council. And the reason why we're bringing the capital budget forward this, this year earlier than the other budgets is that, you know, we would like to get out, we're experiencing, because there's a lot of projects that have been funded with various grant programs, the city experienced, you know, the similar thing that all the municipalities and all the sectors are facing is a lot of this, a similar number of companies fighting for the same, for more projects. And by going with the capital budget now, it'll allow our staff to go out to tender earlier. And so this is one of the reasons that the budget is here tonight. The capital budget process started back late in the, later in the fall. This is an opportunity for council tonight to take an overview of the capital budget. It's available online. It's fully funded from the available sources that the city has. We're looking to have the capital budget approved tonight. There is a second part of the capital budget. Since we've been receiving the OLG funding, we have a follow-up meeting in May, which then allows the capital budget to be amended for similar type of projects that are funded strictly from the OLG funding that we receive. As I indicated, the next slide shows that the number of steps that the staff have taken. Basically, we have priority one projects, which are in front of you, that are ready to start, meaning these are projects that the directors have developed, whether they've been brought to council previously or whether they've been internally generated. These are priority one projects, so they're ready to go. Priority two and priority three are projects that, priority two projects are not ready to go. There's some impediment that does not allow them to, to move forward at this present time, whether there be more work that needs to be done, whether the studies have not been completed unless there's been a priority or some sort of commitment from council that needs to be finalized. Priority three projects are more projects that are in the, in the, in the wings that are coming forward. Both priority two and priority three projects are used for more of a longer-term planning. Our goal is to get to a five-year planning mechanism, and it's kind of consistent with our asset management plan. The finance staff, and you, you were introduced to Catherine Louie earlier, and she's the primary person, and I want to thank her for her work and her staff's work, Carol and Lisa, on, on getting this document prepared. But they, they take the lists that are generated by the operating directors and we identify how to fund these projects through the various sources that we have. It should be noted that, you know, we've, during the year 2017, we've had numerous reports that have been brought forward and we've funded projects from the 2018 funding for projects that were included in 17 capital project. And it, it's, you know, this practice had started a few years ago and has continued. And this year, it's been almost $8 million or over $8 million worth of projects. I don't, you're bouncing ahead a little bit on the charts, but I guess that's an indication for me to speed up. I think it's important that you understand that we have, the projects that were pre-approved in 17 include the Garner Trail, the St. Lawrence and Chrysler Sewer Separation. This was a project that was funded from the CWWWF project of the federal and provincial government, where we were able to utilize a lot of federal and provincial money. And this was a project that we knew that would go into 18. Harvard Avenue was an emergency replacement. There was initial repairs, there was additional money spent on capital works. And in 2018, we've had, we're allocating even more money. Lundys Lane Streetscaping, that's actually Phase Two. That's a typo. The Shriners Creek Retraining Wall, St. Patrick's Church Drainage Improvement was something that came up during the year. Victoria, actually, I'm sorry, Lundys Lane Streetscape is actually Phase One. Victoria Center Streetscape Revitalization is Phase Two. We had some funding that was used in 18 for, again, we received a large grant from, through the PTF funding for transit. And we used some funding in, that was from 18 for those projects and then at Picater Park. The next chart shows the total capital budget for this year is $32.6 million. That will be amended, as I indicated, in May when we bring back the final installment. You can see that Municipal Works, which would make sense, has 79% of the funding towards it. I should note though, that it does vary from year to year on the percentages. We've had situations where the recreation and culture, you go back to the years when the arenas were, the arena was built, you go back when we have significant capital funding when the museum was done, where these numbers may be altered a little bit. But in general, Municipal Works has a significant portion of the vehicle, of all of the assets. The fleet is also, the fleet, the municipal, entire municipal fleet, other than the transit buses, are funded through Municipal Works as well. The library funds, it gets approval for its capital projects, but the, the funding for these projects are from their own reserves. Should be noted, the next slide shows that there's three types of capital expenditures that are done, basically, we want to lump them in together. Replacement and reinvestment. As I indicated when we did the financial statements the last, the last meeting, we have about $800 million in net assets of infrastructure. And these have to be replaced at some point. And so we have significant reinvestment and replacement. I just, I want to highlight a couple of the projects. As I touched on earlier, there's Harvard Avenue, $1.2 million that's in the capital budget. Drummond Road, water main replacement is just under $1 million. Playground equipment. Councillor Peter Angelo indicated the project that's going forward. And we have a significant, almost $1.6 million being replaced on the 10, the 10 playground equipments going forward. And also at McBane Center, we have Phase Two of the HVAC improvements for just under $700,000, among many as, many others. The second is replacement and reinvestment annual programs. And these are annual programs that we utilize for projects or capital purchases to replace assets. One of them is the fleet, fleet purchases. We have $1.2 million. Road rehab, $1.3 million. This is just fixing the roads as we, as we go through it. Sanitary system assessment. A big part of the asset management plan is identifying the condition of our sanitary sewer. We have a significant amount of repair, of replacement that has to do. But the, the really important thing with the underground is getting an assessment of what the, the condition is. And this is a part of a multi-year program. And then the last one, although a small number, is something in the fire department, is the bunker gear, fire, is replacement gear for the firefighters. And then there's many others that are in there. And lastly, the growth in new construction. Again, we have a number of new initiatives that are happening. A lot of the funding does come from development charges, but there are a portion that has to be funded through the other sources. And, and one of the big ones right now is a GO train study and, and development for half a million dollars. A big initiative that's, the city is undertaking with the region. Killer Road Widening is a $1.9 million project. Keller Road Widening is a $1.9 million project. Blackburn Parkway, recently we had some land sales in that area, and we're redeveloping the underground to make that area more accessible. And then we have a road and bridge, Whirlpool Road and Bridge Replacement. The other, the other one is the Muhburn, Muhburn Bridge is included in this as well, and that's a partnership with other funding sources. The funding sources, as I touched on, these are the same ones, the operating budgets, we transfer money from the operating budget, about $4 million, or the same thing from both utility budgets of about just under $9 million. Development charges, these are identified in our development charge study. We'll be doing a new development charge study in 2019. We'll be getting started on that this year. Special purposes reserves, these are basically reserves that are set up and established for specific purposes of Council. Federal gas tax and provincial gas tax are used, they're outlined, they're funding programs that are consistent every year with very specific uses allowed. The OCIF funding is something that was new by the province, and it's, again, it's based on more longer-term funding, but based on projects that meet the criteria. External contributions, I touched quickly on that, that could be the region through the CSO or other sources that the region provides, or it could be an external partner like the Railway Company on the Muhburn Road. The OLG reserve, we talked about the OLG reserve being utilized for many of the projects. The benches, we're not borrowing this year, but the benches has been basically the last choice for this council utilizing that. And this year is something new, we have the OMCC, which is a cycling grant that we received for two projects this year. So, that's included in the budget, you have the budget, we can certainly go through projects that you'd like to talk about as we go through, but, you know, with all the money that we're spending, we also have a lot of projects that we're identifying that we can't fund. And we have put in about $45 million with the projects that are on the TAB 10, and when we have the extra, the final billing from OLG, we'll be addressing some additional projects in that group. The asset management plan was developed in 2014 based on 2013 data. Staff is currently underway of updating this for 2018 and will be available for the next term of council. There's significant debate out in the, in the upper levels of government, the uses of the asset management plan for future development or future capital budgets, and this is becoming increasingly, as I indicated when this first came out, back when the accounting changes were made under PSE, in PSAP, that this would be something that this council would have to start taking more of a look at, and this is, this is coming, and the gas taxes, the OCIF, and the various programs that the upper levels of government have are going to be consistent, more consistent with your asset management plans. OLG funding, currently we've received $14.6 million in the two quarters that we, it's up $1.2 million compared to the previous year for the first two quarters. We've committed $12 million to the capital budget in 18. We also have commitments for the operating budget and various other areas, but we believe that based on the momentum of the fund and based on our predictability of the history that we're, we can allocate at this time, this money to the capital budget. The third quarter payment will be due January 22nd, and the fourth quarter will come in in April. Once that's all completed, we can, we can deal with the extra projects. Municipalities borrow for capital projects, some municipalities like St. Catharines have a very active rollover of their debt funding. Niagara Falls has always been a municipality that has avoided it, and generally we've only used it for very large capital projects or projects that were urgent. We only have one on the books that we would, we've identified as a potential for borrowing, and that's once the police station has been revamped, and that's, the tender is currently being reviewed, but will be going forward and the construction will happen in 2017. The next chart shows, I know council is always very cognizant of the, of the debt and how it's withdrawn over this term of council. As you can see, at the beginning of the term of council was $62 million. At the end of this term, based on the utilization of the capital budget as we put forward, it'll be under $50 million, which is a continue to lower as council had directed. Our ARL, which is our annual limit that we're allowed to borrow, is significantly less, is significantly greater than what we borrow. We have capacity to utilize debt financing, but as council has directed us, except in certain circumstances, not to use debt. So, we haven't considered it in this case. In summary, the next chart will show that the total budget is $32.6 million. We prefunded just about $8.8 million of projects in 17 from the 18 budget. $12 million of the OLG contribution is being used in this budget. No increases in transfers from the two other budgets, the operating and the utility budgets. We received just over $1.5 million from OSIF, and that's an annual amount, and that's being included. We're completing the PTF and the CWWF projects. You can still see there's some large construction projects ongoing on the roads, and that certainly is part of the CWF funding. And we did receive, as I indicated, two grants for projects, one on the Millennium Trail and Whirlpool Bridge? On the Whirlpool Trail, the one I've identified, those are two projects that we received under the CWWC. So tonight, we're looking for council's approval of this budget to move forward. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or the directors can ask about, specifically about projects. The next step on the budget process, we'll be back here on the 9th. We will be sending out the operating budget to you electronically as we've done, and that'll be out before Christmas, so you'll have the data that you need to discuss the operating, the general purposes operating budget on the 9th. Thanks. Any questions?
We do have some questions. I know I as well, when I talked to Mr. Harrison today, I had told him that I was hoping he could enlighten council on the difference between a priority one, priority two, priority three project, which he's gone through. So, I guess my question then would be, a priority one project is just a project that is ready to go? Because I think at first blush, if I was to look at this, I would think that priority one would mean that this project is super important or it's critical to the corporation, but that's not the way that staff look at it.
Well, no, I know, I think that's, I don't think that's true.
Well, I, okay.
I think, you know, the departments go through their capital projects and they, they know enough that they don't put projects forward that have not been identified in council's strategic priority. I mean, we've, we've talked about the asset management plan where there's a significant amount of money that needs to be in replacement of assets. So, staff have spent an enormous amount of time in going through the projects that they, that they, that would increase their, you know, replace the assets that we have. The second thing, too, is, is that there's a lot of initiatives that come forward to the respective directors that they bring forward at budget time for things that are new and that council can consider. The priority one designation is this, all of the projects that are identified have met the criteria within the department as to an asset replacement or a growth-related asset or an annual program, as I outlined, that's important. So, none of the projects that are, that are in priority one are just there. They're there because they're important to do. The distinction between the priority one, priority two, and priority three is simple. Priority one are the projects that are ready to go, that the directors feel that they can get done within the next year. Priority two are projects that there's something holding them up that they can't get done in this next 12 months. And priority three are more projects that are being earmarked or identified that are going to be on the radar screen coming down the pipe. Are there projects, you know, if you look at the number of $46 million, I would question whether we could do all $46 million if you gave us the money, and however, the directors have put that through. And I would say that one of the reasons that they do that is that we've had a history here, the last year and a half, two years, of having projects come to council through a report that have been wildly, wildly accepted by council as important, which they all are, without the consideration for all the other projects that might be lurking around. And one of the things that the directors have done is that they've identified for council the things that they believe in their department, and you can see that by the list of $46 million. There's a fairly big need there. And so, to, I, you know, talking quickly, I don't mean to, but, you know, to characterize that priority one are just ready to go and they might, I think that the directors are sophisticated enough that they would put only projects forward that are important to the direction of the council.
Wouldn't question that, Mr. Harrison. I just look at 2016, it was $13.5 million in priority one. 2017, it was $17 million. And now in 2018, there's 45, which is more than an annual capital budget. So, it's gone up three times the amount in one year.
Yeah. One of the big items that's on the priority, priority one on TAB 10 is Station 7, which is approximately $6 million. That's been there repeatedly. We have other, other projects that have been identified as, particularly in Municipal Works, and I would say, you know, this is, this is telling you that your asset management planning is working because they're identifying projects for you to tell you that these things are coming, that, that these are projects that we need, we need to go. You know, is it, you know, we wanted to bring the capital budget forward, so we got a head start on other municipalities to get the tendering out the door. You know, this has been a criticism of staff in the past that, you know, with the capital budget going out at the end of February or in March, we're missing that tendering window. Perhaps we'll have better luck with tenders, while prices have been good for the most part, but, you know, maybe we'll get better pricing by going out earlier or being prepared. You know, again, I did say that I think that there's a reticence on some of the directors that maybe their projects aren't being considered because we're having reports brought into council and these are being approved on the spot and not considering, you know, instead of referring it to in the future years' capital budget, we're approving them on the night that they're coming and saying that we'll use OLG funding going forward. So, I think, you know, from my standpoint as Director of Finance, I think I need to bring, have a, have a capital budget process that is adhered to so that we're bringing you a full scope of the work that's needed for the, for the residents of the city.
Okay. I do have some questions of council. I have Councilor Morocco, Mayor Diodati, Councilor Carrio.
Some of the points you've already raised, Councilor Peter Angelo, but just one question that keeps coming up, I'm sorry, time and time again, is how can we get the budget to us a lot sooner so that it can be passed in time with other municipalities and the region?
Okay. So, the region, okay.
I guess this is an ongoing question.
Well, no, it's an ongoing question. I mean, the operating budget, unfortunately, the operating budget was supposed to be delivered to you today, and unfortunately I was, I've been off for the last few, a week or so, and there's final touches, touching up to the general purpose budget. I mean, again, the operating budgets for most municipalities are not passed at this point. They are passed after the New Year. The region has a process where they, sorry, excuse me, sorry, the budgets are not passed. There's, there's a couple in the region that are approved. Many of them are not approved yet, they've been discussing them in the public. They have different processes where they have budget committees where the count, the, that the municipalities have the press at and they talk about it. If you look at Niagara Lake discussion, they've had a budget process where they've gone down. We're a little bit later this year than they are. St. Catharines has a public forum where their budget committee goes, they start in, they start in April. As far as, you know, we, we will be going forward earlier in the future. That's, I think that's what council has indicated that they want us to do.
Yeah, I'm just thinking because, you know, it's definitely pointed out that when you have the ability to have your budget approved earlier, you then definitely have the ability to negotiate tenders and purchasing is a little bit easier when you have a little bit of a head start out there, but when you get to be a little bit later in the game, and I've been learning that through building and my experiences, is that the, you know, suppliers out there put a little bit more demand on you, knowing that you have to have it done so the prices go up. I just want to make sure that we as a municipality here have a fair playing ground too, out there when it comes time for tendering and buying and purchasing whatever. So, I think it's important if we possibly can get the budget and have it in our hands sometime around September, October, might be a good idea. See if we can do that. It's my personal opinion, I'm not sure if that's a favor of council.
Okay, thank you. I have Mayor Diodati.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I know Councilor Thompson always reminds me of back in the day, he'd always have everything there ready in advance, but he also comments on how I could dress nicer and a lot of other things, too, so I take it all in stride. But I'd say overall, I'm really happy with the direction. I think this follows what we're trying to do here at the city, the capital budget, and I'm really pleased that the debt continues to go down. That's something that I know has been a council priority to see it continually go in that direction. And I just want a question through you, Chair, to our Director of Finance, the trajectory beyond 18, do you have that planned out, or do you foresee that continuing in that same kind of a general direction?
Thanks through Mr. Chair, to the mayor. The trajectory would be similar. We have a large drop-off in 2023 where the McBane project, the bench draft in McBane comes off the books. For the, for the 2019 capital budget, for the new term of council, we would be addressing a debt management strategy. Right now, we don't have any other projects than the one I mentioned that is planned to be utilizing debt. We're very fortunate in this municipality to receive the funding that we do through hosting the casino that allows us not to maybe have to borrow like other municipalities, and we've been able to upgrade our capital budget with the use of those funds and being aggressive and going out and getting other funding from upper levels of government. I would, so the quick answer to yours is it'll be a similar type of trend with a major drop-off maybe towards the end of the next council term. Again, we would only be using debt financing at the, as a last resort, and we would have to bring it forward to the council for their approval.
Thank you for that, and I know that Niagara Falls is the envy of many cities with our OLG funding, which certainly helps the city, and I think we're so lucky in that we've got all these great new capital facilities, McBane Center, the Gale Center, we have a new arts and culture and Farmer's Market, yet our debt continues to go down. And, and I mean, I know we haven't dealt with the operating budget yet, you know, I know we're hopeful that that's going to come in at a good number as well, but I'd say overall, people got to be pretty, I'd say they're, they're pretty envious of the situation that the city's been in. So, overall, I'm very, very happy with that, and I'm glad, it's like I say, the debt has come down more than, more than $10 million over this term of council, and I'm happy when the time is right to move this budget, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I have Councilor Carrio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A good explanation. I wish I could have gotten it a little sooner. When did we get this? We got this budget?
Thursday.
Was it Thursday?
Yeah.
Friday?
Thursday, I thought it went out Thursday.
Thursday. I mean, it's, it's a huge budget. I mean, I would have liked to have more time with it. I understand you want to get it approved quickly.
Yeah.
But I would have liked to have had it two weeks ago or three weeks ago if you wanted it approved today. Just a couple of the questions that I have is, you know, the questions that are asked to me more than not is, the one that you touched on is why one over another? You know, when you go through the priority ones, I know you explained that directors have a criteria or a system, but I'd like the council to be more familiar with the criteria and the system. So, when I get asked on the street, when, why this project over that project? Could we see the criteria? Is it a printed criteria? Is it a very etched-in-stone criteria?
So, so what we've asked, yeah. So, what we've asked all the So, what we've asked all the directors, and the directors know their projects better than anyone, I don't know their projects. We've asked them to develop this priority one, priority two, priority three setting. So, I'll only deal with priority one, because in my case, priority twos aren't really relevant because they're held up, so they, they can't go forward. And priority threes are more of a planning item, so they're more of a long-term budget. So, priority ones, we've asked all of them to give us their input as to what it is that they would like to do, and the priorities that they set. They, they know their staff, they know their managers, what they can do, and they, they move forward with prioritization setting. There's a number of factors that go into the funding of it, though, because certain, as I indicated, we have certain funding sources that are dedicated strictly to projects that, for instance, and, and Mr. Holman has a water, utility budget, both the water and the sewer budget. He has access to approximately $9 million that's available for water projects and sewer and storm and separation projects, various things like that. So, that money is, is allocated to those projects. So, if you looked at Municipal Works, you say, why does he get all the, why do they get all the money? Well, they, they're generating the, the revenues that are, that are, that are funding those projects. Then you look at gas tax. Gas tax is exclusive to certain types of projects, so we have to look at that, then we try to mix it. But the criteria, the priority setting that the directors make allows my staff to fund it appropriately. So, we, we attempt to match the, the funding priorities that the directors give us with the available funds that we have.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, on this page that's up on the screen, I'm ready to start. Does that mean there's absolutely nothing else required for that project? All council approvals are in place for those projects? They're shovel-ready, nothing else to do except approve them?
That's what my, my understanding from the direction that I give the account, to the, to the directors, that they're ready to go.
So, everything in here, nothing, nothing that is approved or priority one, all approved, not coming back to council for any further approvals, no discussion?
That's what my, my understanding of the priority setting that I give direction to for them to come forward with priority one, that's what I believe they're supposed to be coming back for. So, yes.
So, they're all shovel-ready, not to come back to us for anything else?
Now, there is a timing, there is a timing lag when, when they go out. I mean, we can't take, you know, 60 projects out for tender at the same day or the same week.
No, no, that's not my question. My question is that.
But they're ready to go.
Everything is ready to go.
So, within the calendar year.
No other approvals required by any levels of government. They're all ready to go.
Yes.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve the capital budget as is, moved by the mayor, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call them, oh, sorry, Counsel Crater. Yep?
Really short comment, because I, you know, I think through you to the director, I think you mentioned it two or three times, and I think it is important, certainly for me. I'm thinking of, when you talked about how we, sometimes in our enthusiasm in having a, a full council, that we approve projects in advance. I know you said that two or three times, and, and without really, for us to think about, we approve these things, what is the impact that we're having on you or on other projects that are already waiting, and we've kind of maybe jumped the queue to put them in place? So, the only thing I'm going to mention, I, I think it is important, I think it's extremely fair for you as a, as a director and for the CAO to, when we start going down that road, again, because we're enthusiastic and we want to feel like we're really moving in the right place, that you remind us that before you make a decision, you owe it to us, which is you, staff, to take a look at what we're proposing and going to spend in advance, and what effect it could have on existing projects who are sitting there waiting and have been waiting. I hope I'm making myself clear, but I think it's important for us, again, it's because we're enthusiastic, we want to help the people that are here. I think you said it was like eight or nine, 10 million dollars that we pre-approved.
I mean, some of those, yeah. I mean, some of those projects, I mean, if you take Harvard Avenue, that was, there was a, you know, we had a difficult time in the, in that area. We had to go forward with it. So, the report came forward to do it, and we used the future funding for it. That makes sense. The CWWF projects, where we had a project that was going forward, that was going to be a multi-year project, so it started in 17, but was going to go into 18, that's how we funded the project to make sure. Because if you recall, Counselor, a number of years ago, we had, the capital budget was done somewhat differently. And we had projects that were funded, but weren't really funded because the money wasn't there. It was believed that it would be there. And so, when I took over, when I was elevated to having more responsibility in this area, we didn't, we stopped that practice. We ensured that the, that the funding for projects are there, that there's no surprises. We may have a surprise if a project goes south and it costs more, but at least we have the reserves that we could deal with it. So, that's it. My old boss, when I was in St. Catherine, one of my old bosses in St. Catherine says, every night is budget night. And I know that there's a lot of demands on the counselors for a variety of topics, and I, and I'm cognizant of that. But I think that it's important, when you're making large commitments, that we have to put it in a structured format, and that's why I raised it a couple of times tonight. And hopefully, going forward throughout this capital, we're going to have a lot of pressure this year, being a, a year that's going to, it's going to be a lot of pressure to go forward with projects, and I think we need to be cognizant of what we, of what we look at.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, if there isn't any other further questions, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, closed motions carried. Pass it back over to the mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Budget Chair, Counselor Peter Angelo. We're now on to the consent agenda. What's the will of council? Is there anybody wanting to lift it? This is Counsel Morocco.
We pull CD 2017, National Six, charitable bingo operations.
Okay. We've got that one pulled. Any other, any other council? Sorry, these, I got trees in my way here, I got to see around them. Okay, so, do you want to deal with that one, and then we can move them all in one? Okay, so, just everybody call that up. That's the first one. That was, was that an addition, Mr. Clerk?
Someone's.
Okay, so that was an addition, if, if you didn't see it, because it wasn't on the original agenda?
No.
You don't have, it should be on your screen now, no? It's not on the printed edition, the original printed edition.
Sorry, I just lost it too.
Okay, so we're, CD 20, who would handle this one? Would that be, that's Bill? Okay. Yeah, Counsel Morocco?
No, sorry, Your Worship, it's in regards to the update on licensed charitable bingo operations. Can you just have a little bit more elaboration on that, and like, who's in compliance and not compliant with OLG?
Right, uh, Dr. Rose.
Ms. Mattson?
Through the chair, there is an attachment as well to that report. This is similar to what you'd received earlier this year, just with an update, and that attachment does list all of the charities that do have licenses through to the end of this calendar year. And the report did highlight that we had removed one previously this year at the Niagara Falls Bavington Club. And then, most recently, through, through our review, the Niagara Falls Labor Charitable Foundation will also cease to operate their license.
Okay, so I guess our question is, is all of the recipients compliant with the terms of the OLG?
Well, as, as the review is winding down, currently, the rest would be, yes, but that is ongoing. Constantly reviewing as different charities have to provide their reports back on their spending and where that money's going. Constantly, the eligibility requirements would be under review.
So, if they're not in compliance, are they actually told to stop operating, or they get, they don't get any more funding, or how does that work?
Well, we do our best to work with the, with the municipalities, or, sorry, with the, the organizations. And as reported previously this, this year, they're all dealt with on a case-by-case basis, but still would have to fall under eligibility requirements from the AGCO.
Okay, so, I guess if they're not in compliance, basically, I was looking that they should cease to exist in their funding until they're actually in compliance.
That is correct, yes.
So, that is the way it is, or is that a motion that needs to be a direction of council?
Uh, no, that's, that's the way we would operate. That's if they're not in compliance, we would look at their eligibility. We always try and do our best to work with the groups, to get them to be compliant. But if that's not the case, then we do, as, as the report is outlined, we do have to, unfortunately, sometimes withdraw those licenses from some groups.
Okay, just because I'm sure there's a number of people waiting for licenses that like to get some charitable dollars, and want to make sure that it's fair for everyone.
Well, the report does state that there are three groups that are on a waiting list. Two of those three groups will be contacted in, in January with the opportunity to now be licensed. The third group does have to wait a required one year before they reach eligibility status. They have to have one year of existence before they can get a license to operate bingo.
Okay, that's not unfair. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Campbell?
I found that a little confusing. Thank you, Your Worship. How does an organization that's compliant lose its compliance?
Mr. Mattson?
Yeah, again, through the chair. It's dealt with on, on a continual basis. And it's through, through the advice.
If they've always been compliant, what have they done since the last time they were assessed to lose that compliance? I, I don't understand.
Well, and some of it is, is open to interpretation, but with the direction that we've received at recent training sessions that the AGCO has offered, it was been, it has brought to our attention that some groups out there are no longer in compliance. We're reviewing all the groups all the time. We currently have over 90 groups that are licensed. But when it's brought to our attention, we've, we've acted.
So, they're, they're going to be holding bingo events up to the end of the year, even though they're not compliant?
Uh, that is correct.
That's not what you said to Counsel Morocco?
Well, we have to give it some sort of deadline. Technically, there was licenses that were issued right through to the end of April of 2018. So, we do want to give the groups some leverage there to make sure that they can close their books and report back any monies brought in, any money spent. Unfortunately, that's not always the best scenario to do that, to just shut them down at a moment's notice. We've got to work with these groups to follow up continuously, to make sure that monies they currently have in the bank are properly spent or properly given to those charities that are eligible.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Thompson, Strange, and Peter Angelo.
Well, first of all, I didn't see the report. I guess it just, I saw it on this printed agenda, but that was very confusing and trying to scan the report quickly. Who makes up the decisions with respect to that? Sounds very wishy-washy, the way you're relaying that. What, what, who makes those decisions? Does every municipality that has bingos have that same loose attitude toward this situation? Either they're compliant or they're not compliant? How can you, how can you be so airy-fairy about this thing? You know, you're compliant or you're not?
Well, through the chair, the AGCO puts out a, what's called a lottery licensing policy manual. That policy manual is updated on a continual basis. Through the interpretation of those policies, it's a challenge for staff. Many municipalities meet to try and find out what other municipalities are doing. Every municipality is different as far as how they're interpreting the lottery licensing policy manual.
So, you're telling me that you're the one that's making those decisions? When, when you see something that says compliant or not compliant, you're the one that's making the decision to say, well, we'll let it go until the end of the year?
That is correct.
I find that very...
Yes, the CAO's going to weigh in on that one, Counsel.
And if I could, Counselor, so, and I think what the clerk is saying is that they are working with an organization, there's two, there's two different areas of this. There's the eligibility requirement for the organization itself that may have changed that makes them no longer compliant to receive a license. And then, there's compliance with how the money is spent. So, they're really two different issues. But I think what the clerk is saying is that a couple of the groups that are on the list no longer meet the eligibility requirements to receive a license, does not say they're not compliant with how the money's spent. They may be compliant with how the money is being distributed, which has to be for charitable purposes, but the group themselves is no longer compliant under the ACGL regulations. I don't know if that clarifies it or not. So, it's not to say that the money's not going to proper, proper charitable organizations, it's just that the group that's receiving a license is no longer eligible to receive a bingo license.
Okay, I've got Counselor Strange and Peter Angelo.
Yeah, through Ms. Marido, through our city clerk. Just wondering, is there only three groups that are waiting, I guess? Is that...
That is correct.
Oh, okay. Just wondering, it just seems kind of, have they been waiting for a long time, or is this happened quite a bit, like where someone might not be in compliance? Has it happened every year, or is it every few years?
Given my experience within the clerk's office, I think every year that there's been new licenses coming forward, there's always been one, two, three groups on a waiting list. Some drop out, they just don't have the volunteers anymore, others come on. So, it's very, it's typical of other years past.
Is there a way that we could maybe reach out to some organizations that might be interested in working some bingos, maybe through our Director of Recreation, or some, some sports clubs, or schools, or whatever? Do you, is there a way that you reach out to some of these organizations that there might be some openings?
Well, usually, it's just done through word of mouth. We have, traditionally, through this process, we don't have to go out and solicit these groups. And again, as the report indicated, if a group was to come forward, if they're new in existence themselves, they do have to wait a mandatory one year before they're eligible to get a license. But there is possible that there are some groups out there not licensed that have been in, in existence. They're welcome to contact us to check about what's required.
Yeah, I was just thinking that the three groups seem to kind of small, waiting list that, you know, you think there'd be hundreds, right?
Yeah, it's just three of a currently 90 that are already are licensed.
Okay. I just thought maybe that we could maybe reach out to, maybe put a motion in that our, our Director of Recreation can reach out to maybe some of the sports groups, or something that, you know, could be available in the future to get some of these sports groups some funding and work some bingos.
Our, we've got, CAO wants to weigh in on that, Counsel.
We could, we could certainly do that. The only problem is, if I may, is that I can tell you, once a group gets a license and they're qualified and they continue to be qualified, there's not really a lot of turnover. I, I don't think we get very much turnover on the licenses. So, to create an exhaustive list, somebody could be on the list for quite a while. So, as long as we manage the expectation, and if we're getting other names, they may sit on that, you know, waiting list for five or 10 years before an opportunity for a slot comes, becomes available. And that's something council, you know, in the future, may want to look at. I mean, there's groups, there's groups that have been on here for years and years and years. And, you know, council may want to consider in the new year that, you know, do you, do you rotate these licenses? Do you, do you look at a different method to allocate the licenses? But again, I, I bet you the majority of our groups have been on this list for 10, 15 years, most of them. And there's not a lot of opportunity to turn over, even if you do, do have a list. In defense of the clerk, we've just recently undertaken this process. This is a process that really, I think, hasn't been done in a number of years. We've had a couple of new staff members, and we're just starting to get back. I've asked Mr. Mattson to do this and bring this information forward. I think council should have an annual report so that they know what groups are on there, how much money's being raised in the community. I think that's important that we do that, so council knows where the money's going, who's collecting it. I think there's over $800,000 in the past year alone that's been raised through bingo that's going back into our community through the licensing efforts of the clerk's department. So, it's a good news story, but you have to keep on top of it to determine who's eligible, and it's something now that we're going to be reporting back to you on an annual basis.
Yeah, to that, well, I just didn't, I didn't realize how often it happens, if it happens, like I was saying, to... Yeah, to that, well, I just didn't, I didn't realize how often it happens, if it happens, like I was saying, to, to the clerk. If it happens every year, if it, you know, if it just happens every, once every ten years, but there's only three on this waiting list. I, it just doesn't seem like there's a lot waiting.
Uh, just to give an example, I think the most common turnover that we do see is with schools, for example. Uh, maybe a, a parent teacher, uh, committee has come forward and they're really gung ho to build a new playground. They've applied for a license, they get on a waiting list, they come in, they raise their funds over a year or two or three year period. Of course, those kids move on, the parents then move on, they don't have the volunteers, and then all of a sudden, uh, they no longer require a license because they've, they've done what they've achieved. Uh, they've, they've gone out to try and raise money to build a playground, uh, they've got that playground at the school, and then all of a sudden their volunteers drop. So that's where I tend to see the turnover lately. But again, we, we are very typical to have two or three groups on the waiting list.
There's no further questions. I do have one question too, is, uh, in regard to Niagara Falls charities. I know in the past, there's been discussion that we've been giving some of our bingo revenues to other municipalities who have their own bingos. So are we now all, are they all Niagara? I noticed some that are not Niagara Falls, but I know some of them are regional organizations, and I understand that. But aside from regional organizations that service Niagara Falls, do we have some on there that are, that we have given notice that they will no longer be allowed because they're not Niagara Falls based?
Through myself?
Yeah, through the chair, so far it's been determined that all the groups that we do have, they do provide a service to Niagara Falls. We have turned some groups away where, you know, if they're, if they're, come to us from another community that has a skating club, we would let them know that, no, we already have a skating club here in Niagara Falls and those services are, are being provided locally. Uh, if they're coming forward and there isn't already an established group within the city, but they do, uh, provide a benefit, benefit to all of Niagara residents, um, then we do entertain, going through the same steps that any other group would, would have to go through to get on a waiting list and possibly get a license.
And then, yeah, Counselor Campbell?
Just, uh, if I could take that one step further, is one of the conditions of an organization is that they have a, a charitable number?
Uh, well, they do have to be a recognized charity, yes, through, typically they, they do, but there, there are other groups that still qualify. It could be a, uh, a nonprofit organization, for example, so it's not just registered charities.
Okay. All right. I was just wondering, you know, with the school, how, how a school would get a, uh, a license?
Yeah, and there are, there's, uh, they would fall under what's called the education portion of eligibility that the province has established.
Thank you. And for clarity, this, and then this report, I'm sorry, any other, no? Uh, any other, so anyone that's not compliant, they end at the end of this year? Is that right, just for clarity?
Uh, based on our current review, that is what was determined, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, is there any discussion on any other consent agenda items? Okay, so do you want to move them in block then? Yep, okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Crater. We move all the consent agenda items in block. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you for that. Uh, now we're on to communications and comments of the city clerk. First item, seven point one, is Lundie Manor Wine Cellar asking for exemption to the city's noise bylaw for when they have weddings. Uh, that's the request.
Move seven one and seven two.
Okay, um, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Yes, okay, thank you for that. All those in favor? Okay, now that's approved. And seven point two, uh, also, uh, declare the fundraiser of municipal significance for a special occasions permit, uh, for the twelve hours of Christmas. That's moved by Counselor Thompson and seconded by Counselor Morocco as well. There's no discussion, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved as well. Uh, we've already done the mayor's announce. Ratification of in-camera matters, Mr. Clerk? Well, I could read them again if you like. Counselor Carey will miss the good part of it.
Camera met, or, or, sorry, council met earlier this evening in camera. It was ordered on the motion of Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco, that the recommendation from the two thousand and twelve to the, uh, the December two thousand, December twelfth, two thousand and seventeen in camera meeting pertaining to the McBain Community Center revised cafe agreement, he supported. Uh, so the council authorized the mayor and city clerk to act on behalf of the city to execute the revised lease agreement with Abbey's Cafe, the current cafe operated in McBain Community Center.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. That's moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Opposed? Which one opposed? Thank you. Uh, the bylaws. Are there any additional bylaws, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, no.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo to introduce the bylaws, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? That's approved.
Bylaws two thousand and seventeen one forty-five through to two thousand and seventeen one sixty, read a first time.
Motion by Pe, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange to give the bylaws a second and third reading. All those in favor? That's approved.
Bylaws two thousand and seventeen one forty-five through to two thousand and seventeen one sixty, read a second, third time, it passed.
Motion, I'm sorry, uh, new business. Do you have any, Counselor Campbell, Strange, Peter Angelo, Thompson? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I want to, uh, respond to, uh, a couple of articles that were in the newspaper with respect to, uh, myself on a personal basis and, and, uh, a staff member. I've been indicated that I ordered senior staff to look into private phone records of employees. Is that the case? Did I order, make that order?
Ask our CAO to comment?
If I may, uh, Mr. Mayor, I can tell you that that, uh, is absolutely false, that I can tell the public that Counselor Campbell had absolutely no part in, uh, making any comment directed towards staff related to any phone records of any employee. Uh, I really hesitate to say too much more about that because that is a current, um, grievance that we have going on under, uh, our labor relations with our employees. But to clarify, Counselor, you had absolutely no part, uh, in that.
So either this is misinformation that's being spread about me, or it could be considered defamation on my character. I don't know if you have a sense on that, but I would think that that is against our employee, what is the term I'm looking for?
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, um, quite frankly, Counselor, I, I feel there's been several, um, issues in those articles where there's been a complete misleading, uh, of the facts that have occurred.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. And, and thank you, CAO, for clearing, clearing that up and clearing the record, and hopefully the media caught wind of that as well, so we can report the facts. Uh, Counselor Strange?
Yeah, just a little bit lighter, working through Christmas. A couple of events. Teen Kelsey from Fort Erie, Kelsey Hill, who was a pretty big inspiration behind back in two thousand and eleven. She, uh, she passed away from brain cancer, but we're, uh, we're keeping her legacy alive, um, this, uh, this Christmas by doing a, uh, donation to assist families in need through the Fort Erie Native Friendship Center in, uh, in Fort Erie and seven nine six Buffalo Road, where you can bring any unwrapped toys, gift certificates, or any non- charitable food items between now and December twentieth at that location between, uh, two o'clock and four o'clock. Or the Niagara Regional Native Center at three eight two Airport Road in Niagara on the lake. As well, we're doing another, uh, toy drive for, um, another, uh, boy, Dalton Jakes, who, uh, who's a great boy and had, actually the same, uh, same cancer as young Alex who was here. And unfortunately, for Dalton, um, he, he had cancerous bone in his leg. They took the leg out, they took part of his bone out in his leg, and he was doing great until it, it spread to his jaw. And, um, so it was a couple of years ago that we asked Dalton, uh, before Christmas, uh, if he would like anything for Christmas for himself. So he, uh, he said, I would like to give, give all toys and gifts to, um, children during Christmas that are stuck in the, in the McMaster Children's Hospital as well as staying at the Ronald McDonald's. So we've done this two years in a row called Dalton's Wish. We want to keep it going, uh, this year. So if anyone would like to donate all these, uh, these toys, um, or gift cards, uh, are going to go directly to the Ronald McDonald's Hamilton as well as, uh, the McMaster Children's Hospital in Hamilton. Just imagine, you know, having a sick child during the holidays, during Christmas, and then unfortunately, you know, their family, not only them, but their brothers and sisters are up in Hamilton as well, whether it be in Ronald McDonald's, which is a great place, but they obviously run the home, or stuck at the McMaster Children's Hospital, some of them fighting for their lives. So if anyone would like to, and partnered up with Boss, Boss Rob Phillips from Boston Pizza this year on, on Dorchester Road. So if anyone would like to bring some toys for this toy drive, um, you can drop them off at four, between four and six P M. Uh, this Monday, December eighteenth, on, on the Morrison-Dorchester location at, at Boston Pizza. We're gonna have a, a truck there and I'll be there collecting, I guess, for, for these kids. And then on the following day, they're having a special tribute hockey game for Dalton and another girl, Juliet Turner, who passed away much to really, uh, this horrible disease as well. And you could bring toys and gift cards as well, and that's at the Welland Arena on Tuesday, December nineteenth at seven P M. And we will be delivering these gifts and toys and gift cards to Ronald McDonald's Hamilton and McMaster Children's Hospital on the twentieth. So if anyone would like to get ahold of me through Facebook, um, you can come pick up gifts or anything you'd like to give to some of these children who are fighting for their lives and, and, and won't be home for Christmas, who would like to bring Christmas presents to them.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. I have just a, a few small items. First of all, I think all of council got an email today about Franklin Avenue, clearing this snow on the sidewalk between, I think it was Lundie's Lane and Ash Street. And I know last year, I think we had passed a motion that that be on the sidewalk, lobby. So, um, I know I had sent it to Mr. Holman, I was just wondering if there was an update on whether or not that would be part of the beat this year and whether or not that would get out there.
Mr. Holman?
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I can't tell you if it's been done, but as of two thirty this afternoon, it had not been. It, we were going to go back and have another look at it. Again, we have some, uh, new operators. So familiarity is just a little bit janky for a first time out. Yeah, I thought we did a pretty good job across the rest of the city, but this is one of the areas that we're going to. So just to, just to confirm, Mr. Mayor, we're going to be adding, uh, snow plows to Franklin Avenue between Ash Street and Lundie's Lane?
Yeah, that's what the motion was last year.
Yeah, that was the motion, yep. Does that answer your question?
It does, your worship. And yes, the crews do do a great job. The only thing I was interested in knowing is whether or not that was still on the plow beat, that's all. My second question has to do with, uh, snow plowing again, and it has to do with the trails. I received a, uh, an email from one of the residents who was concerned that, um, uh, the plows wouldn't be doing the Gary Henry Shop Memorial Trail. And I wanted to just double check and see that they still will be doing the trail.
Yeah, to you, Monsieur Holman?
Mr. Mayor, the level of service for trails is that we would get to them within seventy-two hours, uh, sooner, as soon as we get the priority roads, uh, cleaned up. So it's basically as and when the resources are going available, but we recognize that trails are being used more frequently, especially in the winter seasons, and that that level of service needs to be beefed up as our budget permits.
That's perfect, your worship. I just wanted to make sure once again that it was still on the beat. Third item, your worship, was a crossing at the Boys and Girls Club. I know that I've brought this forward before, and I know through yourself, Decarle, I believe that the Boys and Girls Club has just accepted that they're going to become a permanent bus stop. If they haven't, then they're going to notify you that they want to be. But you, your worship, at the, um, so they have two entrances to their property, an east and a west entrance. The west entrance lines up with St. Michael Avenue, the east entrance lines up with nothing. It seems that everyone wants to use the east entrance, uh, when they're walking to that bus stop or walking from that bus stop. The problem is that there's no sidewalk on the south side of the street. So they end up walking along the gravel on McLeod Road, which makes it a, a dangerous situation. If there was any type of culvert, uh, in the ditch at the eastern driveway, so that people could just simply cross over onto the sidewalk, because there is a sidewalk on the north side of the road. The problem is that people won't go backwards, they won't go west and then cross the street at St. Michael to come down the sidewalk. They simply go to the closest route, which is the eastern driveway. I know I brought it up before, it, it does cause a safety concern. I see it all the time on the road. So if staff could just look at that for the future and then hopefully put a crossing in where the ditch is at the eastern driveway to the Boys and Girls Club, that would be helpful. I'm not going to make any motion, I'll just leave it with staff. Next item, your worship-
Just to get clarity, make sure, Mr. Holman, did you want to comment?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that situation will be resolved when we get the, uh, best one to cross over, the P X O, uh, along the Garner Trail, because we were going to put an asphalt trail on the subside of McLeod, of, uh, yeah, McLeod. It would allow people to cross at that one center location, add a signal, and they wouldn't have to worry about, uh, cutting short. Now, I know that in the past, we've had some concerns about people doing that and, and making that, mid-block crossing in a, in an unsafe situation, so, um, unfortunately, we just haven't been able to get that P X O installed this year. It's still on the books, it's funded, uh, it'll happen, uh, early in the spring next year.
Great, thank you for that, Mr. Holman?
Next item, your worship, uh, the Lundie's Lane are looking forward to moving, uh, to moving forward with their C I P. Council did make a motion, uh, about two and a half years ago, uh, we approved, um, the, the forward progress of their C I P. Part of it, your worship, is, uh, I mean, uh, I, I think the city staff have just been busy. We've had a lot of, uh, important projects come on board, you know, whether it be, um, the New Gold Train Station or, uh, or the Thundering Waters, and a lot of staff time is getting eaten up, but they would like to move forward as well. So they were really hoping to set a date, and I'm wondering if, uh, I guess through yourself to, to maybe, uh, planning, if we can choose a date, um, maybe the first council meeting in February, to get them on the agenda so that they can, uh, come here and get their C I P underway. They're just, um, they're anxious to get ready and get going and, uh, hopefully make some improvements to their area before the actual season. As you know, construction season is usually either before or after the season. So I'm hoping to get them on the first one in February, I think it's February thirteenth. I don't know if we can just set the date now and then, and then work towards that as a goal, um, but that's what I'd like to do. I don't know if we need a comment from staff or if we can just do that, or by way of motion?
Mr. Levis, did you want to comment on that?
Uh, yes, your worship. The, uh, staff have been working with the representatives
Yes.
from Lundie's Lane B I A. There are brand new, excuse me, brand new programs proposed for Lundie's Lane B I A. We're trying to make them equitable with the programs that we have for C I P on Queen Street and Main and Berry. Be unfortunate to have programs that were, that are richer for one area than another, uh, and would disadvantage them. So we're trying to bring back recommendations to council that, um, would make sense. We're still working out those details. So I, I would like to say that by February, we would have those details worked out. At this point, um, you know, I can't say whether that is or isn't. As a, for instance, we have allocated about sixty-five thousand dollars in the operating budget for Lundie's Lane, um, C I P. If one property was to receive approval, they could receive up to seventy thousand dollars. That means that the whole budget would be wiped out on one property. So it doesn't really seem fair for all of the people who have businesses, so we're trying, trying to work out those details.
Can we, um, at least put a goal on the board, your worship? I, I think that's what I'm looking for, is I'm looking for a date to-
Target?
To set as a goal, exactly. That's all I want, and I was hoping to get February thirteenth as the target date.
Time for, in time for Valentine's Day?
Yeah, that's what I said. If, if, if there's a filibuster and extends over into midnight, then they would have to hand out chocolates for them.
So, so Counselor's asking, uh, target, if we're, if you're able to set that as a target?
I targeted December the first, however, uh, we're still working on it. So I'll set February the thirteenth if that pleases the counselor, but we'll report back if we're unable to make that date.
That would be great, your worship.
No, that's good, thanks for that, Counselor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And my last item, your worship, um, is just, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we had looked at the, uh, service delivery, I guess, of our, of our parks, and we made the decision to, um, redo a bunch of our tennis courts and, uh, you know, take out one tennis court, put in one basketball court. The reason I had, uh- The reason I had asked Mr. Harrison to, to pass out the priority two, priority three projects is because that redevelopment of the parks for the tennis and the basketball court didn't actually make it to priority one. And I know a lot of people really rely on their parks in the summertime, and using their tennis courts, and hopefully using their basketball courts as Council approved. But if it doesn't make it to construction, then they're never going to be able to utilize that amenity. So I'm wondering what it is that would, that would set that project apart from being a priority one, and whether or not it can be moved up so that it can get onto the priority one list this year, and then hopefully get funded when we do our reconciliation at the end of April for the O L G funds.
Let's get an answer for you, Monsieur Harrison?
Mr. Mayor, yeah. When we started putting together the capital budget, that project was not, that wasn't ready to go, because there was still probably a public consultation that had to happen, and that went on into, into November. We can certainly, you know, I believe that Mr. Holman's at, at a stage, we'd have to check, and we can get back and report to Council, but we can certainly bring it forward when we reconsider the Tab Ten items, which would be, when we've done that in the past, where items have come that maybe not been considered, that we add to Tab Ten, and it could be considered at, in May, when we do the amendments to the capital budget, if, if that's what Council would like us to do, and certainly include it at that time.
Counselor?
Because I think, just sorry to interrupt, finish, I think that's part of a timing issue, and the fact that when we put together the original list, I don't think it was at a stage where it could have actually been something that Mr. Holman and his staff could have conceived that was going to be ready to go for this, this meeting.
I'm fine with that. You're good with that? Okay, great, thanks for that. Anything else, Counselor? Okay. Counselor Thompson?
I was interested in the comments of Counselor Campbell, and the response from the C A O. I think we all had the opportunity to experience on social media what was going on. Certainly, one of our staff members was a recipient of a lot of constant and very unpleasant comments. Is that the extent of, is that what we did?
Mr. Todd?
Well, to you, Mr. Mayor, if you may, Mr. Mayor, I have a few other comments I'd like to make, I don't know if that's the appropriate time, but on that and a couple of other issues related to that, unless you want to continue, I can finish later.
I'll, I have one other thing here. I had the opportunity with Counselor Campbell to be at the Niagara Peninsula Energy Meeting last week, and we had a presentation by one of the staff members that went on for a full hour, and it was so interesting and so informative, that I thought, what are we doing with municipalities, and particularly with the City of Niagara Falls, with respect to cyber attacks and cybersecurity? The staff person, Margaret, there, was so involved for the last year and a half, working on the security of their mechanism that they have in the hydro, that I thought to myself, wow, how come I haven't heard anything about that from the municipality? And I asked her, I said, are municipalities doing the same work that you're doing? Because you hear it every day, where cyber attacks are taking place and having a pretty serious impact on a lot of situations. So I'm just wondering if we could have a report back, even after having dialogue with the Niagara Peninsula Energy, and see if we should be doing something as far as we're concerned with respect to cybersecurity, and making sure that we're up to date on that very serious situation, and I think that's something we should be aware of and more.
Hundred percent. As a matter of fact, I just took a course recently, too, and that is one of the top corporate threats, is cybersecurity, and no one's really ready for it. These people just sit around-
They're doing what they're doing to hide you.
Well, but you figure, they got into Equifax, they're getting into U.S. government offices, I mean, these people are pretty sophisticated, and we obviously need to be ready for it, because for sure, it's definitely one of the threats, hundred percent. Did you have anything anymore?
No, I just, I'll make a motion, we refer to staff for the-
Okay, so motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Carrillo, that we refer the cybersecurity cyber threats to staff to follow up on, on a report, on readiness and plans? Yes, Counselor?
I just, I just want to, you know, our information systems people are cognizant of this threat, just like all municipalities, and they are, they do take aggressive defensive action to ensure that our record-keeping and our, our systems are, are aware. I don't want anyone to believe that we're not doing anything. But certainly, we'll take the information, we've worked well with Margaret in the past on a number of different items, and we'll certainly take the information that they have. Counselor Thompson and yourself are quite correct, this is a huge risk for all, all entities that operate in the information systems world, and we do need to take advantage of it. But I just wanted to quickly stand up and say that our, our staff are pretty cognizant of the threat, and they've been taking mitigation action, so.
I saw a few people got nervous when Ashley Madison got hacked, too, so they're just double-checking. What's that? Yeah. Counselor Thompson, was anything, okay, no, all right, so we'll go to our C A O.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and already tonight, a couple of councils have raised some issues as a result of articles, first of all, articles that have been in the newspaper, and secondly, several social media posts that have occurred over the last couple of weeks, or, I'd be honest with you, I'm quite concerned about it. One of the issues I want to raise with you tonight, and I hate to have to take Council time doing this, but, Mr. Mayor, this is the third time I've had to address this issue with Council. And on both occasions previously, I've stood up and answered, in this case, Counselor Iannoni's questions, and I, I really do wish Counselor Iannoni was here tonight. Unfortunately, she's missed the last two meetings, and I've been waiting to do this, and I just don't think it can wait any longer with the holidays. So I don't want to make it look like I'm trying to point fingers at her with her not here, but with her being absent at two last meetings, this is our last chance this year. The last two times I've stood here, and it was about, again, another Facebook post, and, and comments in the paper, but it's about, who I believe is a very respected, a very respective firm that we've dealt with in the past, Keely and Associates, they provide a very good service and advice. And this deals with an issue where, and I'm going to hand this out to the press, and I will circulate it to all members of Council, where I've stood here and explained exactly what happened. And the B I As came to us back in two thousand and twelve, and asked us if we would help them engage a lobbyist that would help keep Casino Niagara open and profitable during modernization process. Mr. Felicetti worked with them, we got Keely and Associates on board. Hundred percent of the fees for Mr. Keely was paid by the three B I As that are involved, Niagara, Canadian Niagara Hotels, Clifton Hill B I A, and Victoria B I A. And it was just simply a flow-through. We were acting, as Mr. Felicetti does in many cases, acting as a facilitator to help our businesses get their cause heard at Queens Park. And I've had to stand up and explain this three times, continually in the paper, and even on Facebook as of last week. Counselor Iannoni is saying that it's her belief that we engaged that individual to assist us with the Thundering Waters project. It's completely false, but she keeps saying it. The projects are almost three years apart. We engaged Keely and Associates in two thousand and twelve to undertake this work. We'd ever even heard of the Thundering Waters project as it exists today, probably until sometime in two thousand and fifteen, and Mr. Keely's engagement was long done. I've got the factual proof here that will show that the money's flowed through us. It actually has invoices here from Keely and Associates, show the work that was done. I can tell you, and I can speak of this, because it was on Facebook, that Counselor Iannoni had filed a Freedom of Information request for it, which I guess she felt necessary, because she really wasn't trusting I was telling you. I've told you twice now, this is the third time I've told you, and it's very frustrating for us as a staff, where we stand here before Council and give you information, and in this case, the Counselor just is not, just not accepting what our answer is. We've had several Freedom of Information requests, as Counselor Thompson indicated. There was a pretty intense email back and forth over the weekend, those emails appeared in the paper. Again, I believe there's still mistruths in the information that's being provided on social media. I feel in order to defend our staff and what we're undertaking, I feel as C I have no choice but to file a complaint under the Code of Conduct on behalf of the senior staff. Be quite honest with you, we're all quite tired of it, and we, we're tired of having to stand here before Council and defend ourselves. It hits at our integrity and the job we're doing every day for the citizens. So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to counsel on that, we're going to be filing that complaint, and I would urge, based on the information I've seen over the last couple of weeks, I'd urge Council to do the same thing.
Thank you for that, Monsieur, Monsieur Todd. Counselor Morocco?
Oh, geez, you know, I just really want to focus on what we're elected to do, and that's basically represent our constituents that put us here. And it's unfortunate that the last few council meetings and social media outfires, and the people that want to call us and have comments about, comments that are made by another fellow Counselor. I'm, you know, I think we're getting to the point that if there's really an issue, have we not called on the Integrity Commissioner before? Have we not followed up, and has reports not come back to qualify some of the statements that are being made, you know, and just to, to deal with it? It's not the first time, like, how many times have we had the Integrity Commissioner follow up? Can I have an answer to that, maybe from the C A O?
Mr. C A O?
You know, was there anything that was found in violation of city staff, or any of the comments that were made? It just is an ongoing, I don't know, it's just, you know, I have to say it, we try to sit here and continue to go on, but when I actually am out shopping, and someone says, oh, so you're part of the old boys' club, I have no idea what the heck they're talking about. What are you talking about, the old boys' club? Well, on the social media, Counselor Iannoni commented that, you know, part of the old boys' club, and maybe she didn't say me as the old boys' club. But I sit at this council as a group, and hopefully that this group of elected officials come together to make decisions that are best for this city. And I hope to move forward that. And saying that, I really want to put an end to this year, and everything that's gone on, and look positive for the next year and two thousand and eighteen, that we can all sit around the table and work together, and not belittle, and not pick on anyone, and not go into social media and do your rant. If you have an issue, deal with that person on a one-on-one basis, not, not call them out and embarrass them. I feel embarrassed for some of the conversations that have gone on with some of the staff, and I think staff are aware, and I don't have to say it's on social media most of the time. But, and I, and I'm sorry that Counselor Iannoni's not here, and I hope that she's well, and there's nothing wrong, but we miss her presence at the table, she should be here to be represented, and I hope that we see her back in the new year soon. But let's move forward, and if the staff have issues with the Counselor, if the citizens have issues with the Counselor, and if other organizations that she's therefore talking about have issues with her, then I think, you know, it's not upon us to make those decisions. We've actually got an Integrity Commissioner in place to deal with Counselors or staff, or individuals that are actually not going against our code. So instead of this he says, and she says, and everybody fighting, I'd actually just say, let's put the motion on the floor to call on an Integrity Commissioner to investigate. And I also not only want the investigation to happen, but I want the results of that investigation to come back here in the new year as soon as possible, and let's get this cleaned up, and let's get back to the business of the day, and focus on what we need to do, not pick on other personals, other persons, personal life issues, or whatever. Let's just focus on moving forward. So I would like to put that motion forward, to have an Integrity Commissioner investigate whether or not Counselor Iannoni has breached Council's Code of Conduct, and if there's any other further findings, as I indicated, let them be heard here in open council, so that everybody is aware. And you know what, and if not, we move on, and if so, we deal with it. So I would like to make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Morocco. Looking for a second? Got second by Counselor Strange. Do we have any discussion around the motion? Counselor Carrillo, and Counselor Peter Angelo?
Well, I understand the frustration of the staff and the other Counselors. Been down this road, I don't know how many, many times, and when I bump into taxpayers and citizens, they're wondering whether or not we're getting good value for our dollar in hiring an Integrity Commissioner, because even if it's found that the person has done something wrong, the punishment is, I mean, it's nothing. So I was hoping that we could defer this and look into other alternatives. I mean, I understand that's one alternative, but I don't know whether we've had a solicitor or anyone have a look at what's taken place, and go down another route that has some teeth, and just something other than just an Integrity Commissioner, that, that maybe this should be deferred, and give us a chance to look at another route, so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers as much. And if, if they're found to be guilty, there's some serious punishment involved, and they have to pay the cost. This way, the, no matter what happens, the particular person, what if they miss a couple of pays for a council for a couple of months, so what? Maybe we should look at the legal route, unless you've already looked at that, and that's not a possibility, that we should talk about it, defer it till we have a chance to look at it.
Mr. Beeman?
The whole invention of the Integrity Commissioner was devised because there was nothing else. The Integrity Commissioner system was created because there was no frustration before they had Integrity Commissioners, there was nothing you could do. So the, that's why these provisions have been added to the Municipal Act, because there was absolutely no mechanism prior to the creation of the Integrity Commissioner for looking into these types of complaints. So the, this was, as I said, was created because of the frustration of people with what there was before. The only thing that was before, which I don't think is necessarily, would not be applicable in this case, is the Conflict of Interest Act, which citizens found absolutely useless because of so much money to hire a lawyer to bring your, your, a conflict of interest case, and even after you got, you know, you proved your conflict of interest, the most famous case being the mayor of Hamilton, and he was made to write an essay. So, and that was right after the whole shebang was proven. So I, while we could look, I'm not, having spent twenty-five years being a municipal lawyer and watched the development of the Integrity Commissioner system in response to the lack of anything else, I'm willing to look, Mr. Mayor. However, I would advise Council to not optimistically find anything, because no one found anything before they created the Integrity Commissioner system.
So just to follow up to that, so what happened to the old day where when you said something that was not true about somebody, you just sue them?
Well, that is, you can do that, but politicians are extremely hard to find, to have libeled somebody, because the courts give them a lot of latitude in what they have to say. So that, there's, there's a great deal more liberty given to what's said in political debates, as well, because of our values of freedom of speech, things that are not true are not necessarily result, as you say, don't necessarily result in legal consequences. We saw fairly recently, and I believe the mayor will be familiar with a case involving the Conservation Authority, where that was just a finding, the judge freely found that part of what was said and complained about was not true. However, he was quite prepared to dismiss the suit anyway, because of the context of the citizen asserting his rights as a, in an attempt to participate in the political process.
So your advice would not be to get an opinion, produce all of the evidence, have it presented to someone that does this as a regular case of their law, and have an opinion on whether or not- on whether or not we would have any type of a chance to do anything other than-
No, I would not advise that. In any event, that is what, essentially what an Integrity Commissioner does.
But there's no teeth to what the results are of what they do. A real loser in this situation is the taxpayer.
An elected official cannot be, it is just simply, our tradition is not to dismiss elected officials.
I wasn't talking about dismissing the elected official. I was talking about you sue them, and they pay the damages, and they pay a lawyer to defend themselves, and if they lose, they could have to pay your costs as well.
First, we'd have to find a cause of action, of which I think there is a limited degree of there being one. I don't think there is a cause of action.
Okay, well, that was my question.
And that's why, and it's because of that that the Integrity Commissioner system was the whole.
Are there any other questions or comments of council? Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to say that I would be on the same page as councillor Carrillo. I don't know that this is something that I would want to do tonight. I could see deferring it to the first meeting that we have in January. Maybe we'll have a full council then. Much like councillor Carrillo, I don't know that I have a whole lot of faith in the Integrity Commissioner's report really having that effect that we're looking for. Every time that something, every time that something happens, I think a lot of us around the table, you know, we feel like, you know, should we correct that statement? Should we not correct that statement? Well, if we don't correct that statement, then we look like we agree with it, and we kind of wrestle with the fact of, you know, what should we do? But we found out that we went down the Integrity Commissioner route once before. Integrity Commissioner wrote the report, said the person who had done what they had done was guilty. There was no apology. It was an appeal. There was still nothing found that would have overturned the original report, yet there's really not a whole lot that can be done. So, I mean, I'd rather not spend the taxpayers' money in just trying to prove something. I think I'd rather just get on with the city business. So, I mean, if council wants to defer it to the first meeting in January, I'm fine with that, otherwise I'll vote against the motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion.
Wait, the motion is for council to enact an Integrity Commission, not for staff. Staff are on their own path, right?
Right. Yeah. Okay. And there's been a request for a recorded vote? Mr. Clerk?
So we have a motion by councillor Morocco, seconded by councillor Strange, for council to call upon an Integrity Commissioner. Can I read my own writing? To be hired to investigate the actions of councillor Iannone if she has breached any motion with the Code of Conduct and that the Integrity Commissioner report back to council with their findings. Councillor Campbell?
In favor.
Councillor Crater?
Seat left.
Councillor Carrillo?
No.
Councillor Morocco?
In favor.
Councillor Peter Angelo?
Both.
Councillor Strange?
In favor.
Councillor Thompson?
Yes.
And Mayor Diodati?
In favor.
It carries.
Thank you. Any other new business? Motion for adjournment, councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Strange. All those in favor? Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas.